I call the meeting to an end. Would you please stand?
We must see the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nola?
Yes.
Carrie or Renee?
Yes.
Here.
Oh, my Lord, I have to be, um, Lee?
Here.
Gerald?
Here.
Lori is here. Lori, Jeffrey.
And next we have the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion to approve.
Turn your motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll the seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next we have the approval of the past meeting minutes. Do I have the motion?
No, you do them separately.
We can do them separately. We have the working session minutes on April 26th. Do we have a motion to pass those minutes?
Make a motion to pass it.
Roll out some motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Gerald, do the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. We have a slate. Next, we have the board meeting minutes from May 10th. Do we have a motion to pass those?
Make a motion to approve.
Hearing the next motion. Do we have a second? Three seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the treasurer's report. Do we have a motion to pass and accept the treasurer's report?
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Hearing the next motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Renee, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have paying bills from May 6th to June 8th. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Paying the bill, make a second.
Carrie makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Gerald, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the fire department reports. If you would, she stops.
Thank you, sir. Uh, ninety-five calls last month. Almost a record break in the month for us again. Uh, six minutes, forty-five seconds for our response times, which brings us up to an eight minutes below the national average. Uh, staff has been doing great. Uh, I know that one supervisor did attend our brief meeting with the manufacturer that they did come in slightly higher than we had expected. Uh, I'm working with them. They'll get that number back down. They were, uh, anticipated though it would be about a year from, uh, less than a year. But we would have to sign papers yet. We'll sign papers until we get a little more firm number when it comes to modifications rather than that. Well, generated the annual maintenance that we had agreed upon earlier. Uh, that was approved and fixed. It was no problems. Uh, again, it included graph. Obviously, you see, dead days are busy. Um, obviously, we're still running about sixty percent of that. Staff have done quite well. Are you pleased to strive for us? All right. Thank you.
Thank you much. Next, we have the report from the planning commission. If you would, Lee?
Uh, let's see. From the May 25th, the planning commission, we had multiple items for public hearing. First was the amendment for the Thunderbird Raceway to extend hours. Um, there are comments from both owner, uh, owner, and we discussed, uh, asked questions. Uh, let's see. We asked to see if it split the difference, um, half an hour, to start half an hour early or to have a half an hour later. Um, second one was a special event application for Mud Bog. Um, per comment from the event, um, holders and multiple residents. Uh, and after discussion of the board, we declined to permit, uh, based on cash issues and the site being the former landfill that was on the National Superfund List. So possible environmental issues if, uh, breached again. Uh, let's see. Sir, approved to remove, um, item number two from our ground floor minimum area. Motion to the board for final approval. Uh, fourth, we approved a change to section four dot two eight for accessory buildings, um, from two buildings to four. Um, move to the board for final approval. With that, we tabled an exemption for greenhouse, greenhouses as accessory buildings because of the added accessory buildings in the previous. Um, and a motion to review Lake, um, residential district zoning to reduce subjective language by the, uh...
Thank you, Lee.
Can I ask a question on that? Why was the greenhouse accessory buildings on the table?
We, uh, because originally we kind of thought that that was the whole reason why we were going to raise the amount of accessory buildings. That was kind of the main complaint. We needed one more, whatever, kind of thing like that. So at the moment, we found, uh, make less changes. Let's just change that and see how it goes. That's all right. Like I thought it on the road, greenhouses could be exempt.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you very much, Lee. We now have our first public comment session. We will have two general public comment sections, the one now and the one all the way at the end of the meeting. There will also be four hearings during this meeting on the Twin Lake weed treatment, on Middle Lake treatment, on Brock and Cat maintenance, and on Johnston maintenance. Each of those will also have a separate public comment section when they come up. We have a decently large meeting, which I really appreciate. And if you would make space when people are coming up, the microphone and the lectern are up here. I want to ask people to come up to make their public comments and not do it from your seat so that we can clearly hear and know who is addressing us. Give your name, your address, say your comment. Please limit it to three minutes, uh, if you would, for time's sake. And if anyone would like to make a public comment on any agenda item, which we have a very long agenda today, please come up and do so. There's microphone? Yeah.
All right. My name's Robert Miller. I live on Michalinda Road, um, the park that we want to get paved. Um, I did the petition on the road. Everybody signed it, but one person that actually has a house on there. Uh, there's another house where the owner passed away, so that he cannot sign it at, or his kids can't even sign it at this time. But ever since you guys approved to have the horse trail part put in down at the end of the road, it's pretty much doubled the traffic up and down where the trailers. When you got Michigan Adventures flying from Russell Road all the way to Michigan Adventures trying to get in there, they are turning and going down Michalinda Automobile all the time. Occasionally, after the race is let out, we'll see trailers with race cars go by and nobody lives on that road with a race car, so... So our concern is trying to get it paved. The dust is a big problem. The, how bumpy it is. I mean, people that have been down it, um, makes your vehicle just fall apart. It's just terrible. Now, I live right by the corner of Automobile and Michalinda, right next to the horse park. They don't bother me. I, I mean, let a ride back there, it doesn't bother me at all. Biggest issue I have is when they come off Automobile onto Michalinda and it's pedal to the metal, gone as fast as I can go, eighty miles an hour, whatever they want to do. Um, it's a huge safety hazard for kids riding bikes, people walking. Having it paved, to me, would slow it down because we gravel, let's throw rocks that spin our tires. Pavement, you go around the corner and you just go. So that's why I want the Mud Bog paved and everybody else. All right?
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
Grand Abcock, I live at 3008 Michalinda Road in Twin Lake. I live in the other part of Michalinda, uh, right by Cars and Trucks by Ripkenville. And at one point town, time, the township approved for a subdivision going down the road from us. There's about thirty lots there altogether. I think there's over forty houses on the little stretch between 1020 and Dulson. Uh, we have crazy traffic through there. Uh, the road gets rained, it lasts about two days, and I think it only gets rained once it's summer. Uh, we deal with constant, constant dust. Uh, if you sat there around five o'clock and people are coming home from work, it's car after car after car on the road. Big trucks, trailers, I mean, you name it, they're just flying down the road right there. We can't keep our windows open in our house. I lived there for about twenty years, and the past four or five years, I've never seen so much traffic on that road. Same thing, cars doing sixty mile an hour right to the pavement. Cars going to dishes all the time. Our cul-de-sac been wrecked. That's a huge problem. Kids are getting the dust all the time, and I think it's up to the township to fix that part of the road since you guys approved for thirty houses to go in to our road in that subdivision. I don't think that that's, that's right personally. I think that the developer had to pave to Dulson Road and not 1020. To me, that doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Jeff Rosy, eight-two-one, Michalinda Road. I have the exact opposite concerns about Michalinda Road. I, I'm not for paving it. People already drive so fast down that road. It's a long straightaway. I've got two little kids. I moved to a rural area because I want to live in a rural area, and I don't want to live in a subdivision. And I think paving that road will cause more people to use it as a shortcut from Thunderbird Raceway and from Michigan Adventure, and I don't want additional traffic on that road. And I don't want people going a hundred miles an hour down that road, which they always, they already do. The dirt, I think the dirt actually causes them to slow down a little bit. Where if it was, uh, if it was paved, I think it'd be, it'd be awful. Blood has... That's my side.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matt Kuchowski, of the 2616 Wyoming Avenue Southwest in Wyoming, Michigan. And I just wanted to take a moment, otherwise I would regret it. I've known Jim Cross for over ten years, and in that time, he's displayed incredible kindness, patience, perseverance, and honesty. I realize this isn't a popularity contest, but Jim is the kind of man who would give someone the shirt off his back. He truly cares about his friends and his community. He's even went so far as to collect trash off the township land and bring it to the landfill to make our community look better. He is an amazing friend, and you could do far worse than accepting his bid for the land that he has offered. And I would ask that any other offers, would, any other bidders would retract their bids before a decision can be made. Thank you.
Wait, two people coming up?
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
We don't have to go off the line, but...
I like to thank you.
My name is Linda Peach, and I live at H-34, Hope and Duck by North, Oklahoma, Michigan. So I knew, and I am Jim Cross's older sister. So I, I know what kind of a man that he is, and he, when he decided to come home, this is where he chose that he wanted to be and to retire. And because of that, I can tell you that, um, when he goes someplace, he stays. And when he's there, he's going to make him have to be in the community. And anyone that needs access, access to whatever they need back there is with open arms. And they help if they need it, so they're open arms. So I know that he would be a great neighbor to children, teacher, neighbors. I know he would be a great, um, um, great to your community if you come home, and he would be very respectful to your, to your neighbors as well. So I hope that you love him.
Thank you.
My name is Cam Maroni. I live on Bee Gees Road. I, when you ask for Bee Gees Road, if you sold the property, um, I have property right there that's my property, so I'd like to expand that property. Put that property on the tax road, and not that I like paying taxes, but it probably could help different things in the community if it wasn't a tax road, because it's just sitting there. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Can I come in on the ORB?
Yeah.
I understand there's no ORB ordinance being discussed. I would like to see it go through very selfish reasons. My house and my property are a mile from each other, a mile and a half, and legally I have to trailer my bike there to ride my property. I would like to feel comfortable going with my son and I. I have to get my property sold. So, guys, opinion, what's up?
Can I get your name?
Right there. Grace.
Thank you.
I'm, my name is Jim Cross. I'm the person that some of my friends have talked about. Appreciate that, by the way. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be considered for that strip of land off Russell Road. And I know, I happened to be here when another upper came in and, uh, and a friend and a neighbor, and I don't fault him for being also interested in it. I would, if I didn't, I understand, right? In my, I understand the logic of it. This strip of land that is, is up for the bid here goes directly to my residential zone property, and my reason for requesting it was to build a home on it. It doesn't go, it goes to this tiny little property or past a tiny little property of the other bidder that I saw come in. But there is a, a different strip of land that, that actually goes adjacent to his property and would be much better suited. And so it may be at some point an opportunity in the future for, for him to go through the process that I went through and put in a request and, and have access to his landlocked property also. But I just wanted to thank you and say I understand the reason for it, but I think it's better suited for my property, and I would do my best to be a good neighbor for myself.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Um, my name is Linda Borman. Live at 720 Michalinda. We have lived on Michalinda about twenty-seven years. The speed is a factor. I had discussed with Tony Barnes as far as lowering the speed limit, at least if we can't get it paved, possibly lowering it. I've recently, uh, I like to walk the road, uh, my husband and I, and, uh, we are dusted many times. We are muddied when, uh, we've had one person literally spray us with slop and mud. I've got somebody, a couple of people that love to dusting, so, um, they literally, if they see me out on the road, they will, they will gun it. So even if, even if we can't get it paved, um, with the board considering looking into lowering the speed on Michalinda and Automobile Road. We walk both roads, uh, Automobile up to Riley Thompson and, um, Michigan up to Whitehall Road when my back permits. And I don't know if it's due to the dust or whatever, but, um, recently with an X-ray, um, they discovered I had some fibrosis in my lungs, so, um, I don't... It is, um, I saw on the Dalton Township Citizens site, someone else said something about, um, health issues. That is a, that is a real issue, so, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comments? Other than the four hearings, public comment won't be until after all of the items on the agenda. All right. So you know the public comment, so we will move on to our decision items on the agenda. By the way, I appreciate everyone getting up and making those comments. I can tell some of you are definitely nervous and had to overcome a little fear to do that, and I appreciate the participation. Our first item is a land sale bid opening. This property is not the one we heard people speaking about. This one is on Light Lake and Putnam, and we do have one bid in for this. I just grabbed the seal. All right. We'll be opening now. We did set a minimum bid of seven dollars, seven thousand dollars for each of these two parcels. And it says, Dear Mr. Martin, I would like to submit the following bids for vacant parcels in Dalton Township. It lists the two parcels. One of them, it says eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. That is a parcel ending in zero 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 two. The other parcel, ending in zero 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 three, is seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. There's one more sheet here. And it is just, it is simply our notice sent back to us that we were having these up for sale. So this is from Dan Billings of Rothberg. I make a motion to accept it. All right. Carrie makes the motion to accept.
Second.
Roll the seconds. Does the, any discussion?
Can we expand the motion to include the total of the bid accepted?
Would you like to add...
It's fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars, Carrie.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Perfect. All right. And we did, we did clarify previously on these land sales that the boards can, can deny anything. We can accept what we want. We want to meet some minimum, so we have some flexibility here. So the motion is to accept this. The second is to accept this. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Let's roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our second item is the land sale for the land off of Russell, which is the one that we had heard about in the public comment section. Now, I had three bids, so they're all sealed currently. I will open them in order that they came in. This one came in on May 24th. And this is from Jim Cross. It says, Dear friends, Lisa and I would like to begin by thanking you from the bottom of our hearts for your consideration of our request to make the land available for purchase that will give us legal access to our residential property, which has been here to pour land lock behind this township-owned land. Purchase of this land will enable us finally to build our home and move back to the area of our childhood as we transition into the retirement phase of our lives. Finally, we can look forward to a long-awaited homecoming. Our understanding is that the township has made the decision to accept a minimum bid of twenty-two thousand dollars for the land as described in the motion passed on the May tw- at May 10th public meeting. In consideration of the value of the land, as well as the generosity of the township board, supervisor, and staff in making it available to us, we are offering twenty-four thousand dollars for the land. We would also like to say that we are happy to give access to any other adjacent present or future landowners who need access to their property on the driveway we will be creating on this land. Thank you again for your service to the Dalton Township community and for your consideration of our plan to join that community. Number two came in at four ten PM today. All right. So this is submitted by Jesse McCormick. It's for the same five parcels of land. It is made up to me. It simply lists those parcels, and the bid amount is twenty-six thousand five hundred and ten dollars. And the third one came in at four twenty-six today. To whom it may concern, our Jim Cross, who bid twenty-eight thousand one hundred dollars for the land offered by the Dalton Township, including the parcels in the list of the same five parcels. And this one is from Jim Cross. So those are the three bids that we have. Twenty-eight thousand one hundred dollars.
I make a motion to accept the twenty-eight thousand one hundred dollars.
A second. Turn the seconds. Do we have any other discussion?
You know, there's a big part of me that wants to give it to him for twenty-four thousand. He already went two thousand and twelve and above what we had asked him for in the first place, what we set the bid at, and he said he would open up his, the road right of way to anybody. Why should he have to pay an extra amount of money?
I stand corrected. I will second you, Nola.
Okay. Do you... Gerald withdraws the second for the first motion.
I will draw the first one.
Carrie withdraws the first motion. So Nola, you're making...
Renee, you have a motion to, to accept his first original bid for the twenty-four thousand for those parcels of land.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the bid by Jim Cross for twenty-four thousand dollars by Nola and is supported by Gerald. Do we have any other discussion? I would go with the higher bid, personally, but, uh, but we will do a roll call vote. Okay. Can you legally do that?
Yes. Yeah.
Nola? Gerald?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lori, no. Jeffrey?
No. Motion passes. Next, we have a land sale request on Bee Gees Road, which we did hear a public comment on. Now specifically on this, at one time, this land included a park from the township. I did not include this in the packet because we just found the paperwork today, but this was an abandoned park that we abandoned at a board meeting asked by the board in nineteen eighty-five. And so it's grown back in. It's just been sitting there since that time, and you have, the deed is clear and free. So that's the further information on this piece of property. It is, it's for parcel six one zero seven zero three five two zero 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 three zero zero zero. And we have the appraisal from a Realtor for between thirty-five thousand dollars and forty thousand dollars for this. And obviously, as we've discussed multiple times, that we, at this point, have a choice of setting or not setting the minimum on what we would like, and we can or cannot put it up for sale according to what we would like.
I make a motion that we accept land bids on a property under consideration on Bee Gees Road for a minimum of thirty-five thousand dollars.
We have a motion by Lori. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Gerald, second. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none. Let's roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Gerald?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the petition for paving Michalinda. Now, we did hear in the public comments about two different parts of Michalinda. So this is the part over by... So this is the part over by Homobile Road, Whitehall Road. And if you go through, we put a lot of effort and a lot of work in talking to people with this to collect these signatures. Part of this does, on the very end, go over into Brooklyn Township. From what I've heard, is the people on that part of the road are also interested in this, and I did talk with the administration in Brooklyn Township, and they are also open to this being paved as well, so it sounds like it might be helpful. A lot of people, when they're going through this process, will hear that it's around, by around, I mean, a little over a million dollars a mile to pave a road, they kind of balk at that. But nevertheless, this has, was able to move forward with collecting the signatures. Obviously, we did hear the case for being against this as well. So we have a list of signatures, so you can tell that the work has been done. Now, we've gone through several special assessments, and we know that they include four resolutions carried through over time. This is before that, so it's step zero, essentially, where we would accept the petition, and we would say that the road commission comes up with a plan and a cost estimate. So we're before resolution number one on the special assessment.
I make a motion to accept the petition for paving Mishalinda to Whitehall Road. Please allow me to be a role in the road commission to generate a point.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Carrie, second by Renee. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's roll a call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 2021-06, four accessory buildings, which we heard about in Lee's report. And in this, they did increase four parcels under five acres from two accessory buildings to four accessory buildings. And it wrote a few other things in the notes, but then it's basically it.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance number 21-06 concerning accessory buildings.
A motion by Carrie, do we have a second? Gerald, second. Do we have any other discussion? My discussion on it would be that I would like to see a difference in the amount of accessory buildings below five acres and more than five acres, and the potential for the exemptions for greenhouses. I know that when the planning commission did this, they were taking a conservative approach, which I also, I also support that. If we go with massive changes over time, they fluctuate, they swing back and forth, that is, that's good for knowing. There should be steady and consistent change in what we consider a good direction, and I think that is very reasonably happening in this case. Is there any other discussion before we go? Hearing none, let's roll a call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 2021-07 for the minimum ground floor area. And we know that when we originally brought this up, there was the example of the house with the garage on the bottom and the living area on top, like you see in more urban areas. You don't see it too often in a rural situation, but that is what has changed here. We talked to several people higher up in the state wanting that underground floor area had been established, and there was no safety concern or anything like that that we could find, nor did that, that came up in the planning commission discussion, but nor did they find a good reason for it, and so that's why we have the resolutions in front of us.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance number 21-07 concerning the ground floor area.
Carrie makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
No seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll a call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 2021-08 for the truck prop regulations. Obviously, this has been a figure of item of discussion over the last handful of months and also over the last more than a decade now. In this, when I was writing, there were a couple of concerns. The first concern that came up are the restrictions of the roads themselves. The other concern that we had occur is that the planning commission does not have the explicit power, when they're doing a special land use permit, to negotiate limitations or exemptions for trucking routes. And so I've written in here that that would be possible for the planning commission to do, because this is a general ordinance and not to be zoning ordinance. And then were a couple of corrections. There was one provision about the title of the chapter that was incorrect, and then the section numbers would have to be adjusted, so I included a provision for that.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance number 2021-08 for amendments of truck prop regulations.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Carrie, second by Renee. Any other discussion? My discussion on this point is that there are five parts that are limited, just like it was in the 2008 version. All right, there was a change in 2007 when it came into existence, and then there was a change in 2008, and then a change in 2016 to limit for this. And essentially, we have moved it back to that 2008 version, which allows more trucking. To me, I think the section of Russell Road from Kenwood to White Lake Drive is limited. I don't think it would need to be, and I think it would help out the village, not that our job as a township is just to help out the village, of course. But currently, they have a section of A1 Road that they have to use when there's restrictions on the road, because there was funding provided from a higher level of government than us that it goes through the village. Now, they've redone Lakewood, so opening this up will allow trucks to go down Lakewood, which is nice, because then they will roam the village when those load restrictions aren't on. But I don't see a strong reason for that restriction on Russell going up to White Lake Drive either. I see the other restrictions for White Lake Drive and Blue Lake. So I, that's the adjustment I would make to this, is to eliminate the road number five restriction.
I will rescind my motion.
Okay, so it's passed with the amendment of eliminating number five for the restricted road. All right, so that's, that's the motion by Carrie. Do I need a second in this motion?
Yes.
All right, so the motion by Carrie is to pass this ordinance with the adjustment of taking Russell Road from Kenwood to White Lake Drive off the list. Renee seconds that motion. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, roll a call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next is for attached garages. When Lori and I had looked at this originally, this pertains to the minimum ground floor area, and we adjusted that, we've gone through the process, we've gone through the board, through the planning commission from multiple meetings, back to the board, and passing that. But there's another section for attached garages. A lot of times, the zoning ordinance references itself, and you have to adjust multiple areas to make a certain adjustment. In this case, it says that the floor area of the garage shall not exceed 60% of the total floor area, and obviously, if you're building a house on top of a garage, they would be the same amount unless you had a smaller area downstairs and the house expanded out of the top somehow, so it would be odd. So the idea here is just to start the process for the planning commission, looking at making this adjustment.
I make a motion to the planning commission to review the zoning ordinance pertaining to attached garages.
Noah makes the motion. Do we have a second? Renee seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll a call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the election equipment service and maintenance. On this, there are laws that pertain to this. There has to be service and maintenance on election equipment at certain times. Lori is currently acquiring one more unit, which will be good, because we need to be able to keep up with the ballots that are happening to update us. So what we have sitting in front of us, as far as these numbers are concerned, don't include that, because we do not have possession of it yet. Nevertheless, it would be added to this list for ongoing maintenance to these numbers. If we do the contract out for a handful of years, then they do give us a 10% discount, and we have to do it anyways legally, so it's very reasonable. Am I saying all that correctly, Lori?
Well, the option we have, the option one is the $18,200. That's if we just pay down that five-year contract yearly, okay? The option two that they offered us is if we pay it all, the five years and one year, they give us a discount, and the discounted cost is $16,280. So that's a savings of $18,200 if we pay the maintenance agreement this year, and then it's prepaid for the next four years. And like Jeffrey said, it does not include the scanner that I have been requiring to purchase from the City of Orange Shores, which will be our second scanner for the absentee county board, which we do need.
Are we able to do this for a budget at this time?
I can make adjustments to the election budget to cover it, because at this, I budgeted for four elections this year. Right now, I don't have any. So unless something changes and we have an election in the winter, we don't have any elections this year, so I can make adjustments in the election budget to cover that.
And none of our election equipment is Dominion, correct?
No, it's all Marini.
Okay.
Yes.
Every woman is looking at a quarter and missing a second.
Yeah, and it is the same age as the existing equipment, so I would have to...
It'll all line up.
It'll all line up, yep.
I make a motion to approve the election equipment service and maintenance, and even go with, gosh, if we can pay it off, option two, that would save the township money right there.
All right, for the discounted price, so the motion is to approve the election equipment service and maintenance for the discounted price, with a lump sum upfront. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Carrie makes the second. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, roll a call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the irrigation system repair. Now, this is kind of odd, but there was work done on the irrigation system here at the township hall frontier in 2018. It was about $7,000 worth of work. It has not properly worked since then, and I actually found the invoices, and there were notes from Central Wells in those invoices that some things needed to be changed in the electrical system, and apparently was not properly followed up, essentially. So I inquired into what needed to be done, and we need a better starter. Also, when that work was done, it was not brought up to code, so it's currently out of code, and it was when it was done. So we need a starter, which is relatively expensive. It was $1,000, but it's specifically made for pumps, and that is the primary issue, and then it has to be rewired. So I reached out to a couple of different companies. BNL is the one that was recommended by Central, because they worked with them, but we have a quote from them, and we also have a quote from Alaska for slightly more money, and I reached out to another company, but they never got us a quote in. So if you do this work...
Who did the original work? Didn't do it properly?
The, so Central Wells did the pump work, but the electrical companies work.
I make a motion to table this right now. I don't think we should be, this is somebody, I don't think we really need to be spending it this time. We should maybe push this up to the next one, discuss this more in the work session.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second to the tableists. We'll potentially discuss it at a later date. Do we have any other discussion? All right, I personally, I would like to get it completed, because it's been already troubled spot for a couple of years. It is a few thousand dollars, but we're working on cleaning up some of these, some of these problems from the previous years. We will go with a roll call vote on table.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, no. Jeffrey?
No.
Motion passes for table. Next, we have the sewer rate study, and we have brought this up before, looking into what was recommended by the state, that we do a sewer rate study. At the time, we had gotten in the one proposal from Municipal Analytics. I looked into what other municipal organizations, other governments had used and reached out to a few of our companies about putting in proposals, and Lori had drawn up a request for proposals, and we sent that to them. We did not get any in, so we still just have the one from Municipal Analytics.
I make a motion to approve their proposal from Municipal Analytics to conduct sewer utility financial subsidy to build an housing rate study.
A motion by Carrie to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Lori, second. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, roll a call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Noah? Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the Catalpa Park tank removal. What this is, somewhere around 15 years ago, there were vaults, restrooms at Catalpa Park and there was a lake. Those had burned down, from what I hear. The part that burnt down was taken care of, but the cement and the area, the tank in the ground for those toilets was just left there and just got missed. It's kind of off to the side of the park. I've talked to several people that have almost stepped in it at various points, and I actually stopped one young man over the last 12 years, that he's been living there when he was a kid. He said they used to catch frogs in there, and the way he had discovered it was almost stepping in it. So it's an odd, it's an odd situation that had just been left there for some reason. It does take some money to solve, which may be why it was just left there.
I'm just wondering, is there a reason that it needs to be taken out? I mean, if it's already been there for 15 years, why do they have to pull it out? Is there a reason we can just fill in around it?
Well, yeah, so what it is, it's set up, so this proposal is to take out the cement, all the cement pad and that type of thing, and then to pull out canisters that are in the ground, the contents to leave, and then fill it.
Is there a reason it needs to come out?
It's like any other hazardous material. You have to get rid of it. You have to get rid of the hazard first.
But what is the hazard?
It was, it was a toilet.
Well, after 15 years, I can think of anything.
I know, but that's, it's like, but it's like any, it's like if you have a gas pump that's been sitting there empty for 15 years, that's still the pump itself.
Gas is a lot different than what you're...
Exactly. So all I, all I know is it was, it's considered hazardous.
Are you allowed to bury a drain field in your property? Yes. I work, I work for a plumbing company. In like City of Orange Shores and other ones, when they switch the city sewer, basically what has happened to a second tank, they crush the top, they fill it with sand, and then level it off. That's it.
As they stand right now, they are a hole, a concrete hole, they're holding the ground. I don't know how deep they go, but there could be eventually a drowning risk or something like that.
Filling in is absolutely, it needs to be done. My question is just why the extra cost of pulling something out could...
Been there 15 years already.
I think things in the ground, what's in the ground already, and still have the safeties, and they have to have it properly taken care of.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure on the legality of just covering it up.
So maybe we can table this right now and look at different options.
If that's an open hole on the safeties, I don't know what I'm talking about. I've never been there, and somebody needs to stop people falling in it too.
Right, it needs to be filled in. We definitely agree on that.
But it needs to be identified as a dangerous place to be.
A barricade place. My daughter almost fell into it last weekend.
You can have the maintenance guys put barricades around it.
Most of the thing is that you want to make people aware that there is something of danger when you do anything, so you know, even in the bottom corner, get somebody else there.
Yep.
I agree with the sentiment. So if we identify it right now and we table it, sort of kind of, you know, what you want to do if we really want to do all the work, Carrie, this whole, oh, we just want to crush it and fill it.
There we have it.
It is normal for second tanks to be crushed and filled in, they need to be humped first, but it is normal to crush and fill in there, okay? It happens every day, health, cardinal house, it happens every day. But they do have to be humped first, you get ready up the, the contamination, and then they get filled in.
If you table it with barricades, is that going to cost more to pull it?
No. No question.
All right, there was a motion on this.
I make a motion to have maintenance go up there, put the barricades around it, identify the dangers of being present, and to table this until we figure what we want to do for sure.
Second, no.
Second by Renee, motion by Carrie to table it and prevent us to put barricades up around it. Any other discussion?
Probably throw these plywood over the hole, cover it up, and then barricade it.
Thanks, that's a roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
No.
Next, we have zoning administrator nomination. Now specifically on this, Lori is doing very good, but she's looking at stepping back, stepping her hours down, and moving into its entirety. So we had put out requests for people applying for this, we had 18 applications, we went through background check, review submitted application materials, I did IQ and personality testing, we did reference checks, phone interviews, one hour sessions with myself and Lori, specifically on some of the issues that the township is encountering, so we could talk through that, and then a panel interview with Lori, Gerald, Jessica, Kim, and I, so the people that would be working with them in the office. We took four applicants through that entire process. Out of that emerged Stephen Kerr as my nomination. I included a bunch of information in the packet here, and so that's, that's basically what we're looking at.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Stephen Kerr to position zoning administrator.
I make a motion to approve the appointment. Discussion on this real quick before we approve this. We had to have applicants I see one, or the other one.
Two, isn't this Amy's back there?
Yeah, back there.
I got two of her packets by the way, I didn't get any of her packets.
I just have included in the packet information on Stephen Kerr.
I don't know where this came from, but it was in her packet.
Well, my thing is this, we, we're basically, we're hiring an individual to take Lori's position here, I think we should look over at the other applicants as well, not just one, that's all I got, that's information from one individual. How am I supposed to really make a decision if one individual, just like you said, is 18 people? I mean, I could say it's three or four, and then pick, you know, pick, pick the top four, and then we go from there. But just one, two, like she said, she didn't get one, there was two, but.
Well, that's because I didn't include that, I mean, it's not part of the packet.
It was in our, just so you know, it was in our mailbox. I got two copies, I must have gotten those by accident.
Did someone else put that information in your packet?
So we have at least two applicants, so we have information on them, we don't have any information on the other two. So we're just, is this something that, how do we deal with that? Do we have to maintain this for one more month and figure out how long is Lori here?
Oh, that'll be a little bit of a disaster if that occurs. I, I mean, on this process, so I went through all these, all these steps, I'm doing the interview, and we had the recommendation of the person that would work and fill the position well. So if we could do a panel interview of the board, I figured it was more important to do the panel interview of the staff that are working with them on the basis of what they can do.
Definitely important, but we kind of feel left out in the decision-making process? We feel like we've, we kind of feel we're feet and a foot to the fire, we're being shown one person, we're not being given an option. And I understand that it has to do with people that work with her, or work with him, but this is a township, and we're part of the board, we'd like to retire that decision.
Okay. I make a motion to table this until we get some more information about the other two individuals that you chose from the town board.
Second, no.
Okay, I'll be, about motion by Carrie to table it until we get more information on two other individuals, and we have a second by Noah. All right, any other discussion? All right, so I, I think that's a bad option, I think it puts us definitely behind on the timeframe, I think the steps that we went through and the information that's provided is a lot of information, writing samples, IQ tests, personality tests, and.
You definitely did your homework, and that's not in question. It's obvious that you definitely put your heart into that, into this decision, so we're not trying to be disrespectful, but at the same time, if there's four applicants that are coming forward, we have information on two, and one you didn't even know we got, we're kind of feeling like we're in the dark about the other two, too, so we're like, wait a minute, what's going on with the other three? We'd like to see the four options.
And obviously, you did this for all 18 applicants, not just this individual, not just the other, she's speaking about.
There were four people that have brought through all the steps, so we eliminated people at different points.
So then, no sour division, I think we shouldn't speak about that, and then, as a board, I'm not, I'm saying this individual was not worthy on the pipe, right, yes, I mean, he got here, he sounded really good, and it sounds good for the job, but what about the other two?
We got our packets Wednesday, so we didn't really have a lot of time on it. Heck, Thursday, Thursday, should be able to discuss and look over it, because we only got information on one.
Do you have a question? Lori, do you have something?
To table it, don't wait till Friday, it's too much.
Right.
Was anybody having an objection to the person that you suggested? Or you just wanted to see?
Well, that's not the issue.
That's my question though, is anybody have objection to the one that he's.
No, or is it, but what if there's someone who's asked him about something, that would have been.
But there's also no objection taken in the back row, so we have more to find.
But you have one person suggesting that he has worked with that person, and they like that person, if you had an objection to that person at any point, then it makes sense to maybe table it.
I understand what you're saying, but I disagree.
I just heard your lady who's retired, so we're going to be without somebody, because you got to, I'll just look at the other.
The process is, the process for hiring the zoning administrators, the first, the applications are taken by the supervisor and the current zoning administrator. They go through the process of interviewing everybody that was applying, then they narrow it down to four of the top candidates. The four people then met with the supervisor, the treasurer, the clerk, and the office people that will be working with that person, because we are the people that are going to be day to day working with these people, and based on that meeting and those questions, this candidate came as the best candidate, based on how he did the interview, his history, his work history, and that's usually the process, and then from that point, the supervisor brings his candidate to the board, and the board makes the decision. It is in the process, so it's not, part of the process isn't the board, whole board being in that, into the decision-making. The board at this point should be trusting the supervisor, and the clerk and the treasurer, and the people in the office to make the best decisions.
Robertson, definitely the recommendation.
That was my question.
Yep.
It is politics, so it does get wild.
Yeah.
Did you guys have an objection for someone?
I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, because if there is an individual, let's say, she got one rating, she got another one, I might have put in a pack like those two, but I'm just saying, there might be the individual that strikes me as more qualified, you know what I'm saying, and then we can talk about that, that's what the board does, we talk about it.
This is subjective, not objective, this is a matter.
And as you put clarity to the process, then it makes it easier for you to.
Correct.
We're probably going to go with Stephen. But we would like to know our options, because this isn't a dictatorship, this is me, the people, this is my opinion on our.
Exactly, and that's what I'm trying to do here, to voice our opinions, it's an opinion, and, and to discuss in front of everybody, so this is for, you know, of course, we're discussing with him on why, what, why he chose this individual, and how it, how it came down, and now by seeing this and going, okay, there's nothing here direct, I mean, just a lot here on this individual, all this.
And it looks awesome, we have done, we've gone through it, the final call, but only one person, we haven't even had a chance to, to look at the other options.
And I'll respect.
And that's fine, I respect that, but this still is not a dictatorship.
And that's why you have a board.
Right, and that's exactly right, so.
And that's why we discussed.
So I'm going to respect my table, and I have a report of Jeffrey's recommendations for approving the deployment of Stephen Kerr to position us on the list.
Are you seconding my motion?
Can you handle a pretty short timeframe to come across?
Well, what we've got, so we have, do we have a motion by Lori?
Yes, I made the motion.
Of Stephen Kerr, and we have a second by Carrie.
A four approval.
All right, any other discussion? Here are none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
No vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
No.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Before we go on a little bit farther, I just want to say, I made my back question, okay? And I do appreciate that you guys were taking the commitment to consider that, just Jeffrey's opinion for this township, I, Jeffrey, he did due diligence, he also told me that I scored very well on the test, and I feel like the person that takes this position, first of all, you didn't get to see my resume, you didn't, I didn't get to talk to you, I didn't get to meet a lot of you, you did. Thanks, Renee, just, I believe that the most important thing for this township is the heart that goes along with it, and I live here, I live up the road, I have been in zoning and building and construction my whole life, I own a construction company with my husband for the last over 10 years.
This, but this isn't a public comment section?
Can you give me one minute?
One minute.
One minute. I believe that the person that you chose, not that I, I don't know him, I haven't met him, but does live here, and if you would take that one week to consider that that appointment to this community should be a member of this community, that it shouldn't be an outsider coming in, if you could take a week and consider me along with that person, it would just be something that I would appreciate. I, Jeffrey did do his due diligence, I believe that completely, that he did his due diligence, but I really don't believe that it should be a dictatorship record, I don't believe that, I think everybody should have had a chance, at least your top four people should have had a chance to meet the board and speak to them, and say what they thought was important.
For the record? I don't know her, just so you know, this was not personal, I just, this is all.
And I've never met her, I have never met her, I'm the owner named by.
Same way Gerald has, had something he doesn't like about the gentleman, he didn't say it, I missed a lot of meetings, so it takes some time to go through it, I'd be happy to take, track my question.
I'll elaborate a little bit more, yeah, if you're, if you're a prospective lawyer, and you tell a gentleman, I'm setting you up 2:00 P.M., this is what time your interview is, you show up at 2:05, you're going to get that gentleman a second chance. My main thing, especially from the engine that serves, is you are always working 100% all the time, doesn't matter your job, this gentleman, they want for his interview late, I cannot stand people that are late. If you are late.
What if I felt the opposite? What if I feel like five minutes late is no big deal?
Or what if it was an accident, you're late?
A pull over or something.
Such a.
Are you working with them on a daily basis?
Yes.
Okay, well, then, you're earning a lot more than mine.
I, I.
The gentleman we're speaking of, that was late, is why I sent him.
I am here every single day, and I am here generally right around 8:45 in the morning, we don't open, I am here all the way up until almost 5:00.
Sometimes emergencies happen, I mean, five minutes, something could have happened.
Now, that was just an example, the gentleman was late, I, I cannot stand being late, I'm everywhere, half hour, always.
Everybody's different, I agree, I like the lady who should look for the hole, the person that's a hole.
I am a back row.
How else is it against them?
Yes, I look at everybody.
It's an interesting discussion, which is why I like having the working sessions, so we can just get crazy and wild, and everyone can say whatever they want, whatever they want, and that's kind of fun, but we definitely are in the decision portion of these agenda items, we're trying to move through them, decent way to go, and this has, in particular, already been voted on.
But that was, that was just one thing on top of it, didn't do any more.
Thank you.
Now, we have traffic, if you have anybody else.
Next, we have the inspector contracts. Now specifically on those, when I started looking into them of when, when they come up, when the dates are, that type of thing, it looked like there was some inconsistency with keeping up with them, which I believe there has been in the past, and not all of these counties have a set date that they expire, so it seemed reasonable that if we have some sort of issue, and we need to go after someone, something like that, that we, we can do that, that provision should be in the contract, but otherwise, they could be ever here, they could just be continuing, that way we don't have an issue with contracts expiring, that type of thing, because there, there has been that since, since we've been in office, but we're trying to clean that up essentially.
I make a motion to approve updated contracts for building, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing inspectors.
Motion by Carrie, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Renee, do we have any other discussion? Here are none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 2021-22 for the Twin Lake Weed Control Treatment, and on this, these next four items will be hearing, so I will open the public comment specifically for Twin Lake. Anyone would like to make a public comment on Twin Lake Weed Control Treatment, please come to the front.
Is Twin Lake the town?
No, it's in the lake.
The next ones are coming.
Yeah, this is actual Twin Lake for the county park.
All right, public comments closed, so this is Resolution Number Three of the before resolution process.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-22 for weed control treatment.
Motion by Carrie, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Renee, seconds, do we have any other discussion? Here are none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 2021-23 for Middle Lake Weed Control Treatment, and I will open up this public comment, if anyone would like to make public comment on Middle Lake. Have you seen Middle Lake? Yep. All right, so we do have a public comment that was written in, which Lori will read.
This came from a resident on Middle Lake, Linda Summers, this is to me and to the township board. The Middle Lake weed control on my tax payment was 6,850, the weeds in the lake, oh my, in the lake between our property and the rat, were this, were thicker and taller than they had been in the past, or since I purchased the property in May of 2007. In addition, there was an influx of hundreds of snails in the water in 2020. Apparently, this particular weed control service needs to be evaluated, and the percentages of herbicide treatments for the eradication and control of weeds be adjusted more accurately to, and it's very hard to read this, I'm sorry.
It's handwritten, with a shaky.
Yeah, to add the job of eliminating weeds. Our children were unable to swim to the rat without their legs becoming entangled by excessive weeds under the water. Please evaluate and adjust treatment, and this is sincerely Linda Summers. And I apologize, it was very hard to read.
Yes, did you have a lot of public comment? Do you have?
Richard, I'm on White Lake Drive, and I'm on North Lake, and I realize this is on Middle Lake, as far as that letter coming in, it reads, I've been to every public hearing from PLM on the retreatment and everything, there will be weeds in the lakes, because those are natural weeds, they cannot be treated, it's illegal to treat them, they can treat from milk oil, invasive species, things like that, so the fact that you can't swim to your rat, those are natural weeds, can't do anything about it, that was on our lake also, I disagree with PLM on different things, but I think they do a fair job. I disagree with PLM on different things, but I think they do a fair job.
Well, and until people stop fertilizing down to the water, until that happens, you're going to have weeds. I've lived on Twin Lake for 71 years, and used to be able to see to the bottom of that lake before we had all of this allowed fertilizer, TruGreen and et cetera. So it's going to be there because people moved from town and they want their lawns like town.
You can look at our...
Second.
We can't run, we will not.
Second.
We will not add weeds.
If anyone would like to make another public comment on the lake, if you would come up to the left turn. None, I will close the public comment.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-23 for Weed Control Treatment.
Motion by Kerry, do we have a second? Gerald, seconds, do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes.
Kerry.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Laurie, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 2021-24 for Brock and Cat Maintenance. And this is the first resolution in this process. We'll open up public comment for Brock and Cats. Anyone has any public comment? Brock and Cat Roads, they're private roads.
Typically, we're at $62.63. Do you guys have the totals of what it's going to cost this year versus the past year for the maintenance on the roads?
We do have...
For the parcel per foot?
We have listed amounts, we have them per parcel.
Yes.
A parcel of Brooklyn per foot, or...
They're all the same.
Each parcel, no matter what the road condition is, is the same.
They're all like that.
Yep.
So even if you have, let's say, $600,000 exposed on a road, and this other one has $120,000, very difficult.
There are differences in how special assessments are sometimes done. Sometimes they're done per footage, sometimes they're done, or everyone's the same, which is what I believe they're looking at, Mr. Linda, and in this case, and there's some where they split that 50/50, so half of it's done in proportion and half of it's done straight and flat across.
So you're saying it's per parcel? What about the parcels that are like the ones we spoke of on the northeast corner that egresses off of Dawson, not off of Brock?
So on this one specifically, for instance, the cost in 2021 is listed as $293.79 for each parcel. I'm not sure out of the parcel list exactly which one you are talking about.
I don't know that it's on there, it wasn't on the last assessment, so we didn't add anybody to this class, it's still not on there. And if that one's still not on there, I'd like to be excluded from the class because I don't egress Brock Road from my parcel, they're attached to my primary parcel, which is homesteaded.
What was your name again?
Ten Weaver, $62.63 Dawson. I can tell you the parcel number, so I don't have to...
I have it right here, he's on page eight, on the bottom.
I was wrong to include it in the first place.
Oh, yeah.
Well, so what we did on this is that because there's this idea of egressing off certain roads and not off certain roads, and there were exclusions before when that was made up, and some were excluded and some were not based on where they were coming from.
Does anybody know which parcel we're speaking of? Is the one that's on the northeast corner, Brock?
That other one, I'm not sure which one that is on this list. Do you have any other names of the person?
I do not, I assumed the assessment was going to be the same way it was, and I wanted to be excluded from the first one. The only reason I was included is because the clerical error that got corrected later was taken care of by taxes about the township being corrected in our previous years.
Didn't the special assessment, right? And so what we did is included, we made the list like you would if you were paving the road, so that if you're on the road, if a property is touching the road, then you're included on the list. So, because I thought that was more consistent than saying who uses the road to what extent. The way they do the special assessments for paving is more consistent, that if your property is touching that part of the road, you're included.
If everybody's property is touching, we should all know how many feet are touching, and then it should be wrote down per foot. And I have two parcels, so I'll be paying more than a normal parcel. I paid two parcels for five years, I had to pay all the publishing and everything else. I've got like $7,000 in the road names for a road I don't have a driveway on that's homesteaded to my primary's parcel. And I was included in this class the first time because of a clerical error, whether it was done by the people that split my property or the township wrote it wrong. It was missed by the bank to the property when they sold it. If it's not per foot of who's touching it, you know, my driveway comes off of Dawson, and so, and I'm homesteaded on my two parcels. I have parcel numbers on Brock, but there's no driveways, they're not approved, they're unapproved properties. It's basically a feeling. If I'm not using the road, I'd like you to be excluded, or I'd like to know that everybody pays the same.
Well, I'm not sure about the other corner, because I don't have the parcel number on hands without clicking the map and finding the parcel number, I'm not sure if that corner line is included. But if it's touching the road, it should be included here.
It should be on here.
It is on there?
Should be. If it's touching the road, if it's on a partial road, it's on here. That's why I asked you, because I got the names here, but I have parcel numbers, but no address.
So on the parcels total, I believe originally there was 26 parcels included by two. So it should be around 27 or 28.
22, 23, 24, 26.
Actually, it's not included.
I didn't see it on the page, but I think it is.
It has 26 on this list.
Are two of the addresses also, because the one would be a Brock address, so if you didn't, that property that has a Dawson address that I'm referring to, that's not mine, it's across the way, that has road frontage on the whole north side of Brock, is the road frontage from the northeast corner to one parcel shy of the northwest one, and it's a Dawson address.
Okay. Then we don't have to do this written up with the addresses.
It's just parcel numbers.
But your name is on here.
Parcel number and names, that's all we have, and then...
With a parcel number, but not an address.
Well, either way, I'd like to be excluded from it, I still have it corrected. Because like I say, I have the same, I mean, I have parcel numbers, but typically, if you have an unapproved piece, if the county's going to allow me to homestead it and not pay extra taxes on it because I don't have it approved, I would think I shouldn't have to pay for an approved road, and I'm not using it. I don't have driveway on either parcel to it. At some point, if the parcels are approved, then obviously, it would be considered a road, and required to be...
All right, I'm going to make a motion to table this, look into this a little closer, make sure that all the properties are on here, that should be on here. And if there is an error, let's like take a look at it, make sure we fix it before we start.
I have another question, discussion.
Yeah.
If we did pass this, it was on that, can it be made correct after?
I was taking hold last time, I weighed on my...
It should be corrected as part of this process, that's part of why there's...
That's why I want to make sure that we go through.
He just decided, just waited five years to stand up.
The lawyer fees were more than what I paid on it, if I wanted to try to have it reopened after you guys did it for it.
I make a motion to table this, so we can hit the balance, make sure all the...
I second your motion, Kerry, because it's easier to table it for another meeting and get it corrected beforehand.
Correct, exactly. And I ask you please come to the next one, also, actually stay after, I give you my number, and we'll keep in contact so that we can make sure this is taken care of right away.
Now, we have a motion by Kerry to table it, seconded by Gerald, do we have any other discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Kerry.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Laurie, Noah. Jeffrey?
Motion passes for table. Next, we have Resolution 2021-26, correction, 2021-25 for Johnston Road Maintenance. So it's been on the same schedule, this is the fourth resolution in this process for Johnston, also private road. So I will open public comment for Johnston. There's some movement back, but it doesn't look like they're covering this right.
My name's Kerry Lawson, 2587 Johnston Road. This is to have maintenance done on Johnston Road. I believe after discussing with a number of my neighbors, that we want maintenance done. We just want there to be accountability to lose, lose in charge of that, whether it be the township, whether it be the road commission. There seems to be a little bit of gray there. Would like to have some clarity on that for the bunks that are going to be used for this. And I would also, on this gentleman's question on how is every property stopped, charged to something, I would...
So it is by parcel, not by foot? Okay, by parcel.
And so I can speak to that process, so it is the road, initiating the county management, the roads. That's different with the villages, specifically in Michigan, some states are the other way, or they reverse what the county and the township does, et cetera. So I communicate with the county road commission to work things out with them. I communicate with them several times a day, to the point where I've definitely burned out that communication to a large extent, as we have as a township to a fair degree, I do believe. So, the voice directly coming from me, right, so I have people call and complain about roads every day, because we have a lot of roads, and I've never contacted a person that's like, "Yeah, I really like my road." And, problem going back to the Roman Republic a couple thousand years ago, right? And so it's just me almost constantly messaging them and calling them and saying, "Hey, we've got this problem, we have this problem, we have this problem, we have this problem," on various roads. And I think it would probably add a little bit to that voice if other people directly contacted the road commission. I know some people definitely already do, but in the end, I can't just directly tell the road commission what to do.
It seems to fall on deaf ears there, though, once it leaves here to there, and then we come back to this. I think that's some frustration that we're having in this, that we're paying for the maintenance, but there's no maintenance happening. And I believe that, not speaking for everyone, but for the majority, I think that we don't mind paying the maintenance fee as long as there's some accountability and what we're paying for is happening. I know that you're working, and you're burning up your lives, and burning up your ears on that, but yet at the same time, we're not seeing a difference. So we need to see that difference. Whether it's your contact there, who is that person? Okay, and ask, do we have to put together a petition, go to the commission, what do we got to do? So that's what...
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm not sure on those other means, I mean, they could definitely be pursued. And as of now, nothing's being done with them because we don't have a special assessment for the roads. Now, when I talked to the road commission before, it's, they charged the low amount so that a low amount of maintenance gets done, because they wanted to take the, they wanted to keep the assessment low. Essentially, for a higher level of service, there'd have to be a higher level fee.
Okay, but the service that we're paying for now seems to be, it is low.
Right.
But it seems to be very low. And so what's the next benchmark to get more service? You know, what does that, what does that look like as far as cost? To know, yeah, for what we want to have done, to be able to have the road maintained in a way that the community wants. What's that going to take for the road commission?
So it's riding multiple times a year, ten roads a year. What's the...
For, right, for getting more? I mean, basically, we could go through the process for a special assessment district again. And that the signatures could be collected, we could go through this process, and then there could be X amount drawn up for each of the payments based on how much maintenance the road commission would make a proposal for.
What are we paying now, and what are we getting for?
He's asking for what they're giving, so it's like, well, how many times do you go for riding and for grading?
What are we paying?
One, two, three, yeah, riding is once a year right now.
Riding is once a year.
It's fifty thousand dollars for every instance after that.
How about grading?
Grading, I'm not sure, how many times is it supposed to grade this season?
I'm not sure on that. I know they do keep the logs.
Twice.
It's twice, it's a season, and it hit at the end of the season, harder for correctly.
Okay, at the beginning of the season, at the season, which is, okay, for plowing because it's a private road. Right, okay. So how often do they plow, and what does that look like as far as what they charge us and what they receive?
You have to see a breakdown.
Yeah.
Plan A, this is the cost per parcel, this is what's on there, Noah. Plan B, so...
So that once we have that, we can look at it, and as a group, we're able to say, you know, we're getting a lot for our money compared to what somebody else might charge us.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
But we need to know what those are, what those parameters are.
It's a reasonable question.
Where do we get those?
Well, you'd have to get them from the road commission, which is going to be difficult because they don't want to do private roads because of all these problems. So they would like to, they would like to be out of that, they would like private people to take care of private roads.
Tell us how much you're paying now, what we're getting for.
Right, I mean, they kick the logs, and then they would be the ones that would draw up different plans for levels of maintenance for X amount.
So how does the township figure into that? As far as calling them and telling them that we need to have Johnston Road brained, and we need to have it plowed or whatever?
Right, I can contact them at any time, I contact them a few times a day, and, but that's, I mean, that's basically it.
Do you have to call Muskegon Garage or Twin Lake?
I work directly with the people higher up, normally, unless it's a small issue, a certain road, but normally, I shoot it a little higher up the line than it works this way back down.
So this maintenance, Dr. Martin, I guess, we're addressing that here tonight, but the road commission is actually the ones that are doing the work.
Right, so the township doesn't have a Department of Public Works, or we don't have a road crew, we don't have trucks, we don't...
Self-help to them.
Right.
You know, I know some people live on a private road, and the neighbors themselves pay the neighbors that have the equipment to maintain their road, and they don't have any issues because it's their private road. But it's not, there's maybe seven houses on it, you know, so it's easy for them to take care of it, but that's something...
There's thirty, thirty-four houses, right, and they make the special assessment.
Yeah.
And what is that assessment, the amount per parcel?
Seven, five, thirty, thirty-two.
How much?
One, seven, five, thirty-two. Or it's one for the year 2021. Year 2022 is 98.85, 23 is 101.82, 24 is 104.88, and then 25 is 108.03. So the first initial year is the most costly. Why I don't have... Because we have to pay administrative fees for all the publishing, all the mailings, all that is paid in the first year.
Thirty-six parcels, the first year, you have five or six grand. Right, and they have that road maintained, and how much are we getting for that, five or six thousand dollars is a total worth of that road. And so at this point, I don't think that any of the people that are living on that road want to lose that. We want to make sure that we're getting the most bang for the buck. Being able to contact the person, is there, who would the person be that we would reach, we'd talk to, along with your help, Jeffrey?
Well, there's... We can do that, I mean, the road commission gets a lot of hassle from people in Dalton. If there will come a coins, we may be there, would they stop?
I've helped them a few times myself.
But, yeah, I mean, I can give you, I can give you information on reaching out to the road commission. I mean, they have their numbers published online on websites and stuff.
You can also kind of, you can also contract a excavating company or something like that if you were... Why rely on the government to do the rest?
They would prefer, the county would actually prefer that, the township, roads are maintained initially.
And at this point, I think that we just look at the options, see what you're getting for the downer stunt, you know, and if there's accountability for those downers can't stunt, with the road commission, we're shooting the private road.
This is, I mean, this is the final standard of this, there's supposed to be...
There are supposed to be, if that's wanted to happen, I think there's supposed to be signatures signed by the, by people that live on the road.
Correct.
Written signatures to the township, correct?
Well, right, so if we're...
If they wanted to do the private thing instead of the written one.
Right, if we're gonna cancel this, we're supposed to see written objections.
And we haven't received any.
Yeah, and at this point, I don't think anyone wants to cancel it. I think what they want is accountability for what they're all gonna be paying.
Yes.
So I'll follow that up, as far as with the commission, maybe Jeffrey, I can't get that out. Dan? Thank you for your service.
Dan?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution.
We have to finish up public comments. Do we have any other public comment on Johnson Road?
Tiffany Smith, I live at twenty-five forty-six Johnson Road. Been here about eight years. Seems like in the last eight years, every year, it gets worse. I notice, I don't know how many parcels are on Coller, which deadens right here at Johnson, but I've seen that get graded three times this year. It's been Brian, Johnson, I've seen graded once this year, and it was barely scraped. Hole came back within three days. So it's like, there's just no accountability on actually doing it right. I called them yesterday, and they called me back today, said the reason they haven't hit it is they don't have a small truck in their area. I've never seen a small truck go down, or choosing a toll site truck, so I'm not sure.
Well, and so, right now with that, right? Because these, these special assessments were up at the end of last year. So really, this should have been done last year. The deputy clerk prepared all of the paperwork, but then, for some reason, it was postponed, and it wasn't done. So then, we started doing them once I was in office, and that's the process we're moving through now. But we, we're stuck, because we're spending money without getting money on winter taxes. So these weren't sent out on the winter taxes like they normally would have been, like they should have been. So there's not money in that coffer. So I'm a little surprised that Johnson was hit the works.
Even, even hit one time, because we don't have a contract, there is no contract for Johnson.
They don't have any.
Because I, because I know it's technically not private, because the post office will not deliver mail down a private road.
Yes, it will.
My mom works for the post office, and she says they won't, where she works.
Well, they're, they're delivering to other private roads and...
Okay, usually, they make you put it all at the end of the road, and it's private. But, um, I was just sitting on my deck, you know, trying to relax on Saturday, and cars went by, and it came all the way, dust came all the way over the house, all the way to the other side of the house, and just was covered on a table. You couldn't even have drinks down there without the dust all around. So it's just, it's horrible.
Thank you. Those roads in question were actually maintained by the township for, since conception, up until five years ago. They promised on loophole to kick those roads off.
No, the state of Michigan did. The state of Michigan made it against the law for any townships to pay for the maintenance on any private roads. That's why they had to stop. So we didn't have a choice.
I suppose the idea back then, considering safety easements, and have the people who live on the private roads, lead the road as a safety easement to the township, and let the township maintain it.
I don't know if that's possible, but I do know that the, the reason why the private roads, the work on the private roads was stopped, was because the state of Michigan, actually, the township was doing it for many years when they shouldn't have been. But the state of Michigan made it illegal for townships to pay for maintenance on private roads. Public funding for private roads.
My point is though, is that they were maintained by the township since conception for fifteen years.
I know, and part of that time was illegally.
Don't they adopt it, though? So you'd have to adopt it at that point?
No.
Can I address this? Because we have a cabinet of nials, and what happened up there with road commission, so be careful what you ask for with the road commission, is, so that they're saying that our road, oh gosh, hundred yards down, is supposed to be private. So all of a sudden, they quit even plowing to our drive. All our complaint was, please don't push the snow in our driveway, just push it straight on our property. But that really ticked them off, and so they went exactly what she said. Fifty-some years they have been taking care of that road. It's not grandfathered in. And, and if we would have done that, they would have put a big end to the road, because it's a, a dead end, they were going to take part of our property, and they were actually going to take a big turn around.
They did, they did, cat and Brock. It's not a, rather, dead end colors act anymore, because cat doesn't line up, and the corner of Brock has been annexed from the person who lives on the corner many years ago, it was done wrong, because one section of cat comes off of Brock, and the other section is, comes off of, was it Duff?
Well, they said that they can. That's what they said. So, I, I mean, it's not just here, I fear it's...
The board could vote on adopting these roads as safety excesses, and if the people who live on them vote, say yes, we could all say, "Yeah, we don't own that portion of road anymore, it's a township road, like a coffer, like a township park."
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure on the legality of that. I know that in the last couple of years, that the township did pay for briding on little sections of private roads, and that was illegal.
Our safety roads at this point, buses runs out of mailboxes, they're out of, I mean, they're the counter.
Fire department.
Because when this all originally started, I was three of five parcels on Brock, and I could have voted down and opted to maintain it myself, and I gave a shit, because I don't have a driveway on it. And I voted to have them combined into making twenty-seven people on cat and Brock together, and then I got screwed over by the last administration, instead of paying one portion, which everybody agreed to, I went around knocking on everybody's door and said, "Look, you're gonna have to pay more unless we combine these." And everybody on cat goes down Brock, and they all agreed that I should only pay one portion, and we'd all get it done, and do it cheaper as a community, and then they screwed it all up, assessed me for two, and I've been waiting five years, seven thousand dollars. And I guess at this point, I would say, maybe I would like to open back up to be able to be voted, be privately maintained, because I voted against it at this point, let everybody drive around the other way, I guess.
And what about safety? What, so lights, lights, bugs, and so, who's the topic?
I don't know.
Yeah, that homeowner, they don't want them, all homeowners? Is there a homeowners association that has insurance to cover it? Good question. You know, it's an issue. They're gonna, it's only gets hurt, they're gonna go after somebody, or everybody who's involved.
Have you guys tried to have the, the road commission adopt the roads again, or?
They won't. We try. They don't want it. We can try.
They don't want any new roads.
We've tried.
Is that something that needs to be brought up to a coming commission? I mean, they have, they have a control of the county.
Any more public comments on Johnson Road? All right, these things are a mess, but I will close the public comments.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two-one dash twenty-five for the Johnson special assessment.
Motion by Kerry, do we have a second? Second. Gerald, seconds. Any other discussion? There are none, we will call votes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
I'll come in.
Lee?
Yes.
Laurie, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash twenty-six for Thunderbird Raceway, as was mentioned by Lee in the planning commission report. And they were asking for an hour extension at the end of their time, because they've been so busy, and the planning commission essentially made a compromise with them, that if they opened a half an hour early, they could stay a half an hour late. And so, that's what we're looking at here. And that was just through this season, what that looked like.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two-one dash twenty-six concerning Thunderbird Raceway.
And the motion by Kerry, it was a second?
No, second.
Gerald, seconds, do we have any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Wade, if you would please ask the planning commission when you make a decision like that, that they include us, because obviously, that changes our schedule for us to staff the organization, including our local workers. Call us, it's like, snafu, so that's okay. The afternoon or coming this year, so it's not a big deal, just please, with something like that, please, just a quick email ahead of time, so it'll be interesting. So these other guys move here a little earlier, and stay a little later.
Yeah.
Tiffany, you have a head of the cheek.
Yes. Just a smile, you're like, "Uh, are we supposed to stay longer?" Apparently, you stay.
That's what we do. That's why we love you.
That's right. You'll go up there, I thought you were not mad.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. All right, there are none, we'll call votes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Laurie, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Passes. Resolution twenty-two-one dash twenty-seven for a land sale agreement with the county. We've heard in this meeting, along with all the other meetings, about all of our money troubles, which will continue strongly into the future. This is an interesting piece of history, and I think it's interesting what's happening now. Back in nineteen eighty-seven, and at various other points in history, land was transferred from the state and or the county to Dalton Township, with the idea that more local management of the land would be better for the area. That has floundered a little bit. As part of that deal, there was an agreement between the township and the county, and it goes into state law as well, that when a piece of land was sold, then we could minus our expenses, except for wages, and the remainder of that money would go to the county. Obviously, that's an unusual incentive for the work trying to be done at the township level, so a decent amount of land has sat there. And there are certain deed restrictions on certain pieces that the township owns, other ones there are not, so those are two different situations. I have been working on an agreement with the county to redo this, and as part of this, we would still be able to subtract our costs, except for wages, and then we would split the money down the middle, half going to the township on these pieces with the restricted deeds, and half going to the county. So it would benefit township and the county in the short term, money-wise, and then also, these would end up back on the tax rule, and everything would get moving, and private people would be able to do some things with the land. So that is essentially what I have been working out, or still working it out, still a little bit in the negotiations, but getting fairly close to the end, and we'll try it for a few months.
I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two-one dash twenty-seven for an agreement with Meskeenian County concerning land sales.
I'll second that.
Motion by Laurie, second by Kerry, do we have any other discussion? There are none, we'll call votes.
Laurie, yes. Kerry?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we move on to discussion items, so we will not be, we don't even have any species, we will be discussing them now. The first item is the golf cart ordinance. Now, the way I wrote this up, I largely based it on the Meskeenian ordinance, because I have nice golf cart ordinance specifically. I made some adjustments, for instance, it was limited to fifteen miles per hour, which is unusual, even in the literature from the state, you normally see twenty-five miles per hour on everything, so I don't know exactly why it was limited like that. But there's, there's a decent amount here. They have a process for signing registration, for signing a waiver, for issuing a sticker, they even issue a license plate, which I'm not sure on the process for that, I do not believe we would have to do that part. But we could definitely use their literature to get ours in place, so that when we do look at passing this, if we pass it, then we have everything ready to go in the office. Obviously, each one of these types of things adds to, to work done here, but I mean, it's very reasonable to add something like this. I did not include any specific roads as not being included. I think it obviously would make sense that you can ride your golf cart down one-twenty, something like that, and there may be other roads, if other people are concerned about specific ones, that it would make sense to consider.
Well, I'm thinking, so, golf carts can go pretty quick, I had a little time. They can do thirty, thirty-five mile an hour, some can even go faster than that. I would think that the twenty-five mile an hour, especially for this area, we have areas that, like in Lakewood, for example, the Lakewood Club, where they're not on the main road, but the speed is to forty mile an hour, because it's a dirt road. So I would think that speed limit for a golf cart would be some forty mile an hour and under, where I think they would be sufficiently safe. We allow bicycles to ride all over the place, you know, if you got a, just on expressways. So I think the golf cart, which I know people faster, bicycle, should keep up the traffic, so forty mile an hour, so I think that would be as safe for you for that, and also open up work in our community that we have right now, because I know a lot of people here looking out and do have golf carts, and they want to make sure that they can use them and enjoy them. And not worry about getting pulled over by the DNR, or being harassed by the law enforcement.
Like where I, where I live, I know that, I've seen just the last couple days, two golf carts, one at, one end of the automobile, and one at this end. But the one at this end, he'll come down, and he'll go down Lakewood Road, Lakewood is restricted by, but he only goes down one block. You know, so maybe he won't be caught, I don't know. But I, I know that it should be allowed to, to have that freedom. It's like, we're restricting a lot of people. I don't like restrictions. I just, I don't like restrictions.
I understand the safety concern. Um, one thing, I, it's not out here, no one's talked about it, but I noticed or saw, or noticed in many of the other things we've talked about in the past, but I'd like to see an orange triangle.
Oh, yeah.
Something, because sometimes, I know the one we have is like camo, it's like meant to, for deer hunting or something. So I would at least like to see something minimal on the back. I don't want to see license plates. My goodness, it's horrible.
No.
We don't even, it's horrible.
Just have the safe, safe features.
So, Amish puggies have to have an orange.
Something.
Something.
Something, reflectors.
Yeah, because you even have the Amish people with their horse and buggies going down the road, and they're not going left, but they have freedom to go down the roads, you know, so you don't really think about ordinance.
An orange flag.
An orange flag. They have to have an orange triangle, I think.
I know that's different than speed limit, we're talking about different...
Right, right. Yeah, but it's worthy of discussion, so like, in addition to, to the light, they'd have to have a triangle as well?
Who knows if there's an electrical that goes out all of a sudden, because they're in a bumpy vehicle.
Well, some golf carts won't have tail lights, or anything like that. Well, they have a headlight.
Horse feed owners.
Horse feed owners, exactly. I don't mind it. Most golf carts are not made like that. So we need to use some common sense on this.
Your ass and golf carts are going forward one miles an hour.
I agree.
I work on it every day, all day.
Correct.
You're just going forty, you've done something that... You've done something.
There's some individuals that are very, very talented.
All right, so I do have the one provision in here, that golf carts should not be operated down alongside a public road or street with posted speed limit greater than twenty-five miles per hour. So what are we thinking that should be raised?
Forty-five will pull off.
Forty-five?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, that's true.
Are side-by-sides included in golf carts, or just golf carts?
Of course. That's RV, that's different.
We're not touching that. We're not touching that.
Just give one of the older ones where you get a license plate.
Yeah, it's kind of insurance.
Yeah, that's insurance, yeah.
I guess what's the bourbon gentleman considered a golf cart or ORV?
That's what I was wondering.
About what differentiates them?
Just a question.
In the thing, the first thing for the purpose of this section, finally worded phrases, which has finally meaning golf cart. Vehicle designed, manufactured, or operation on a golf course for sporting or recreational purposes is not capable of exceeding speed twenty-five mile an hour. So, this doesn't count.
Right. Just have other legal. Well, so, under that definition, then the one that goes forty miles an hour.
That would be an ORV.
Or under an ORV.
Yeah.
He's still running, he just could have to do a speed limit.
Where are these golf carts going on the road anyway?
Most are low.
I mean, where do they, where do they go?
Just around the park, around the lake. I know people that live on the state, golf carts just cruise around visiting each other.
I go to Lakewood Club, I see a lot of currents all the time.
Not a dusty pride though.
Except, except driving their vehicle.
Sometimes they cross the road to the post office. Cross to that post office. But they're going over on one-twenty. Yeah?
How long do we have to cross? Do we have to cross it? Crossing time, it's not going along.
A lot of these provisions include if you cross it, it's long, shortest route to cross it. You can do that. There is, yep, there is our age concern. So, we talked about this before about having people driving on the roads that don't have driver's licenses. So, the way I adjusted this one is so that you have to be sixteen years of age with a driver's license. So, why not side by side? Very awful people. Well, literally, the next item on the agenda is ORV.
That's covered.
Yeah, I wrote these, wrote these at the same time and they are, they are related. We discussed before adding a separate one, just because they're, it's really a separate type of. And I know there are places in northern Meskeen, there's one where they have a golf cart ordinance and they allow those, but they don't have all the ORVs. And some places write the ORVs and we just got to include everything. So, there's different ways to go. And we discussed before breaking up, have the two separate ones. So, but we're, so, they almost, the discussion kind of goes together. Because I think we are talking about the definition of those going faster, bringing in to the ORV. So, do we want to, do we want to just move on to the ORV discussion?
Yep.
Are we going to be able to get into these? You know, like, I know what, how we can, how we can. You can even have my list. Know what's obvious.
Well, these are, these are finished ordinance, so.
They're just one.
These are working, these are working back. If we didn't have anything drafted, uh, on a golf cart or ORV, we're just looking at others and trying to figure out what's going to work for the township.
I wrote this in the text.
You say we're going to have a public comment period.
Oh, yeah, you would, oh, yeah, definitely.
How you do that when we don't know what's on?
Exactly.
Well, that's what we talked about at the end.
And then eventually it will be published on the sitting on the Dalton Township.
Yeah, once it's adopted, once it's adopted. And then no changes can be made.
Right.
No, not at this time, no changes.
So, in the ORV ordinance, I started with, I'm not sure if Leavitt or Levitt Township. Levitt? They had passed theirs in two thousand twelve and they did updates amendments over the next two years because you can see in the writing that they encountered specific problems that they didn't work to address. Now, I compared that with Eggleston and Holton as well. Those are newer, they come from two thousand nineteen. And you can tell either they based it off Levitt or they based it off what Levitt based it on. In some way, they're definitely related because they have some of the same wording. So, I took theirs and adjusted it in a, in a few different places. And so, the definition in here for ORV is really long, but it means a motor-driven off-road recreation vehicle capable of cross-country travel without the benefit of a road or trail, on or immediately over land, snow, ice, marsh, slumland, or other natural terrain, ORV or vehicle includes, but it's not limited to a multi-track or multi-wheel drive vehicle and ATV motorcycle. Related two-wheel, three-wheel, or four-wheel vehicle, amphibious machine, a ground effect air cushioned vehicle or other means of transportation driving motor power from a source other than muscle or wind. ORV or vehicle does not include a registered snowmobile, a farm vehicle being used for farming, a vehicle used for military, fire, emergency, or the law enforcement purposes of a vehicle owned and operated by a utility company or an oil or gas company when performing maintenance on its facilities or on property over which it has an easement, a construction, or a logging vehicle used in performance of its common function, or a registered aircraft.
Part of trade to the periphery.
That's that definition.
Any questions?
It goes off the pavement, it's an ORV.
It's got a motor, it's.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty open. It's a long definition to say it's pretty open. So, in, in here, in here, there is a unique section that I left in. And that is in their enforcement area. Now, like in the enforcement for golf carts, there's just a normal series of fines that go up if you have repeat violations. But in the enforcement section in Levitt County, they have the funds going towards fifty percent towards Meskeen County Sheriff's Department, fifty percent to the road commission, which I thought is very interesting. Now, it is set up as a special fund. There's obviously some, some detail, some, some technical aspect to the legality. And I haven't looked into exactly what it takes to set up something like that, but I hadn't, I hadn't seen it written this way before. So, I wanted to include that for a comparison if we wanted to go the normal way with fines where it comes from the township or if we wanted to think about pursuing this idea of splitting it between the sheriff, who would be doing a decent amount of the enforcing, and the road commission, who's doing maintenance on the roads, obviously. And if they would be open to it. Anything else, thoughts, comments?
How we can deal with fifty percent being split like that? Road maintenance, if you're operating, said, driving on the roads.
It's already on the edge of the road.
Why not?
Or doing donuts in the middle of the road.
Yeah, especially those.
Sure, we need to keep track of where we're.
PA two forty law. PA two forty, it's a law that was passed four, five, six years ago by the ORV community to allow, if you pass legislation, that's science, a law allows township to counties to do just exactly what you're saying. So, like Lake County, for instance, adopted two, PA two forty. Everything you said and more is actually in that law, which would be easier for the township to say, we're going to adopt two forty.
Hmm, okay.
There's other provisions, for instance, in PA two forty, you have to have a headlight and a tail.
Right, that's a near to, yeah.
Okay, so I don't know, there might be other things in there. You're talking about ordinance, when there's a law, all you have to do is adopt.
In other words, why are you implementing them?
Them.
Which is what we've been doing. It's a lot, it's a lot, it's turned ORV and golf carts, we're looking at the communities, whatever we have. Avery had it for a while.
They might have adopted PA two forty and you guys are looking at it as an ordinance. Where it's just a law, nobody stopped before it was set. It's happened with everybody, all towns and townships.
Everyone north? Yeah, and this, I mean, this references other MCLs and state laws and stuff like that, but I don't think PA two forty is in this one.
I don't see it.
You put a lot of work into that.
Sure.
It's PA one seventy-five.
Any, anything else? All right, well, let's move on to roads. Roads, I include the huge sheet, a huge list, and discussion about this. And, I mean, obviously, they're a problem, they're an issue, they will remain, so. But we want to try to work on this in some way. Uh, if you do what you can, we have twenty-seven miles of dirt roads. We get complaint, I get complaints of those at least every day. And each, so each additional brining, for instance, if you just do one more brining for the township, it's fifty thousand dollars. And in brining, whereas that depends on the, on the road and gravel, how recently the road's been updated, the brining lasts between one and three weeks, something like that. It's not, it's not super long.
For fifty thousand dollars, it's clearly lasting four days.
Right, and so you could, you could be, I mean, you could be brining every week or every month, easy.
Or brining, sorry, I interrupt.
You'd be into hundreds of, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we could, we could break the township just on brining, it's real easy. Uh, so, so that's an interesting thing to consider. And then, the rest of the roads as well, specifically for paving of the dirt roads, we obviously can do the special assessments, like it's been, just started on that one section of Michalina, that's over a million dollars a mile, so a lot of people definitely balk at that because that increases your amount quite a bit. I've heard of other places doing road millages. The issue with that is you need a decent amount to make any difference. We can spend in the next few years fifty million dollars on roads, easy. Never going to get fifty million dollars for roads and, I mean, it's, it's an unreasonable amount. So, even if you do a road millage, now, you're not going to be able to hit everyone's road. It's not likely to hit everyone's road equally. Throw, throw a few shovels of dirt on everyone's road and a little patch of cement on everyone's road, it's not going to be useful or helpful. So, now, if you're doing a millage, you're taxing everyone in the township to do certain roads. And obviously, people pass through certain roads, but it's debatable. And I included some various numbers in here for an example of, of how mills go. I mean, out of property taxes, the township gets just barely over one mill, so it's, we get two percent of taxes. So, out of every thousand dollars taxes, we get twenty dollars. And for every mill that goes up, that's raised, the township gets three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So, that wouldn't even come close. If you increased it by one mill, it doesn't even come close to paving one mile of road. And it doesn't go that far on maintaining paved roads either. And then we obviously, it depends on who you compare us to. Because if you compare us to Cedar Creek or Blue Lake, somewhere like that, we have a higher density, but a lot of people end up comparing us just to the south of Meskeen Charter Township. But their population is significantly higher than ours, significantly denser. So, you obviously have a tax difference there. And for instance, if we want to have the services that Meskeen Charter Township does, our population would have to increase by three hundred percent and raise taxes by about sixteen percent. So, it's definitely, I mean, the population increase is unrealistic. Obviously, it's, it's going up, which means if you wanted that level, you would have to increase taxes more. And it's, there's only, there's only so much, so much that you can do. So, they're definitely hard problems, unsolvable problems in the end completely. And all we can do is work on them. In millages, we do have to think about the fire department coming up in a couple of years. And they're, and they're running at capacity. The amount of calls they keep running, it's going up and up. And their operating millage will be up in twenty twenty-three, I believe it's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And so, we'll definitely have to look at making that in a way that they can sustain moving forward because they're, they're getting stretched thin. Uh, I believe when Alan came in, it was about five hundred calls a year. And now, we might be on pace to get right around a thousand for this year. Uh, so that's, that's a lot, it's a big difference.
You love federal grants for state grants? Is there such a thing?
There are some grants. So, I can give you an example of a grant that just occurred, right? It's a sad, tragic story, as most of life is. There were, there were grants that came to Meskeen County. A lot of times, those go to the urban sections because that's where resources generally tend to gravitate. There was specifically eighty thousand dollars that was put aside for Dalton Township, Fruitland Township, and Lakeville Township. And this came through an organization called Windsor Dick through the county. And that money, I wasn't in charge of it. I made a few suggestions as did other people for doing more ditching in our area, which definitely could use it, I think it would be great. And that, that did not occur. There, there was a bridge dispute on lakes where the township would have had to have contributed sixty-nine thousand dollars to make, to maintain the bridge instead of it being replaced with a culvert. I suggested that, that also did not go through. So, it ended up being decided that that money went to Meskeen Charter Township for a project that they were short on money for. So, overall, the road commission at the county level is short on money for their projects, so they're, they're spread thin on that as well. But the money, though, specifically, it's supposed to come to us, which I attempted to get, did not in that case. So, it's, so there is stuff out there, but very difficult to actually grasp. And I mean, there's, there's a decent amount of construction happening because we, the township put money towards the roads, uh, both last year and this year. So, when I came into office, we were one year into a two-year plan. And it's like Lakewood's being done in, in a few other sections and, which is great when we put a few hundred thousand dollars towards that. The township also can't maintain that because we're currently operating in a way that we're spending more money than we're getting in. So, it won't be maintained forever. And it's nice, nice to have some roads upgraded, for sure. Any other thoughts on roads? All right, the joint working session. Specifically on this, I think it would be great to the board and the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals, at some point, to get together, to have a discussion, see what everyone's encountering, because we all deal with different things, and just, just have a talk, public can be there and the public can hear. And it would be nice, I think, to have that twice a year. I'm not sure if that's realistic for getting everyone together, but even once a year, I think, would contribute a lot for everyone working together, seeing where everyone is at, meeting everyone, getting on the same page, having the discussion. I agree.
Have you, do you tend to answer mine?
I, I do not. So, I, we've reached out and we'll have a discussion with the planning commission about what kind of month they might look at that would work. And I wanted to bring it up here, see what, what kind of month, because the, the year definitely changes when people are on summer vacation and when people are going back to school and there's holidays. I don't know what time of year people think that something like that may work better.
Late September is my first, that would be my first.
It's right in between, because that's where schools are started, they're getting, they're getting settled.
Going into fall?
Mm-hmm.
Fall, so. Or the hot, the hottest of the summer.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Before all of the, you know, Thanksgiving, Christmas, whatever.
Right. Yeah, that's very reasonable.
And then May, I would say either early May or April.
Hmm, if we did one in the spring.
Before the, the fall.
Yeah. Good. Any, any other thoughts on that?
I love the idea. I love it.
All right. We will move to fire and emergency charges. So, specifically on this, we have an ordinance on fire and emergency charges from two thousand. And in there, it says that a resolution is supposed to be passed for specific charges. That, I think, my guess, is what occurs when they got into the details and it became complicated and then they never completed it. We, we can't find it. Now, the reason it comes up this year is because we have droughts. Obviously, in West Michigan, we have a decent amount of water, so the droughts are not like they are out west, but everyone can see in the water levels that we have a drought situation going on. And so, we had a lot of fires and a lot of these brush fires that the fire department responds to, they, they fight to get them under control for five hours. And there were, there were a few weeks there where the, the entire fire department was just run ragged. And so, the question becomes, should people be charged for some of that? Because the burden bands were on. Now, I think the first question is obvious. Should you be charged if you start a forest fire when there's a fire ban? Obviously, yes. But then, you get into the details of who, who determines who started it. Do we charge the property owner? Do we try to hunt down who started it? What happens when it crosses property lines? Do you charge, so Alan and the fire department, they, he can generate a report for how much it's costing them to respond to that? Do we go with that? Do we go with the percentage? Is it different when there's a burden ban versus when there's not a burden ban? There's all these details, and I'm guessing that's where it got logged on before a resolution was never passed.
Well, if I have to be, arson's arson, whether it's a burden ban on it or not. If I'm having, say, I have my fire pit and I'm not watching, I walk away. And I have some ash flows up and starts to fire my neighbor's yard next to me. He's, he's, he's a very, over there. I'm up front goofing off, I'm not paying attention, I'm burning his property. Yeah, I should be alive. If I'm down to use all my power, that's your responsibility, that's your fire, that you're responsible for. You're supposed to watch that all the time, not supposed to walk away. That's how it sounds.
We can't be the only that's ever, why have they bent the wheel? Is there, is there other townships that have something in place?
Yeah. There's kind of everything else.
I don't know.
You?
You. So, what would you suggest that we do?
Um, I couldn't give you my opinion.
Well, we value you.
My opinion is very simply this. President pay taxes and not go to charge people. And not a money-making scheme. That's my personal thing. Well, it's not that you be charged. First, like you said, arson, arson is a criminal, criminally intensive. That is completely different than what we're talking about. Those are way different. The, the, it's criminally, I can go after, that's it. But civil, this is what we call a civil infraction. A true civil infraction is up to a township board to make that decision. Do, do, is my staff compensated? Yes. Does my staff need to be out in conditions when we ask and beg and plead and say, please don't do this, for people to, uh, use their poor judgment? I can't control that. Will we always respond? Yes. Is it fair that my staff is up for thirty, thirty-six hours fighting fifteen, sixteen-hour fires three, four days in a row? No. Do I have to, literally had two airplanes dropping water on us? Yes, we had airplanes in Meskeen County. Like the ones you see out west dropping water for us. Thirty-nine hours, thirty-nine acres, seven and a half hours. Who do I go after? That's the problem. Who do we go after? And again, can I tell you what we spent last month? Yeah, I can tell you the time and it's not, it's going to hurt the budget, but it's what we do. I'm not going to tell you as a board what I think you should do because again, I don't know how to correct it. Now, if I have a person says, yeah, I'm an idiot and I did it, which I had a guy tell me that, yeah, I did it, I'm an idiot, throw some money, I went. My boss says, that's not me. That's what happened last time, is the board did not want, because I can speak to her That's what happened last time, is the board did not want, uh, because I speak your, because I sat in the exact same spot and had this conversation. They did not want to be the bad guys to citizens because the citizens already had enough that they have to pay taxes. It's your job anyways, basically, it was shut up and do your job. That's what we'll continue to do. And I will show up every time, we will not complain, we will go out, we will do our best. I will tell you this, that, that I do get a little upset when my staff gets hurt or somebody else is too big. And I think there should be something. What is that as unto you? So I can tell you, again, I can tell you hourly rates, I can tell you what it costs to push a vehicle out the door. You said a medical, I can tell you exactly how much that medical cost is. I did it, that's what they pay tax, that's why I pay tax. I have no problem with that. My concern is I don't know how we're going to be able to enforce it. Because the biggest issue again, yes, Bob set, sorry for missing the Bob. Bob set, set, had a fire and it burned down Bill's property. I rent the Bill's house, Bob wasn't home. How do I really know? Because I wasn't there when I had to cover it, I really know Bob sent Bill the property air fire. Even though I asked, I can't prove it, sorry, I sent the bill to Bob and, or Bill to Bill, or Bill to Bob and they go to small claims court and everything's ticked off? You tell me, you tell me what you want me to do and I'll do it. But, but I, it, it's a very slippery slope, and that's why I got stopped last time because the board did not want to, to, to pull the trigger on what they thought needs to be done. Other ordinance is yes, but most of it happened, I have an ordinance in force, which we do. We have an ordinance in force that people ought to enforce that. I am not allowed by law to write tickets, right? The township has said that I'm not allowed to write tickets, so it has to go through the enforcement process. I don't know how you wanna do that. Again, that's the, I'm willing to figure it out, I can tell you everything you need to know. And I know there are ordinances out there and they are pretty easy, what we call ready to serve charges. I know hourly would cost for two separate rates. But we hit, lost analysis, it tells me exactly how much the call was. The call we're arguing, uh, was three thousand, right, three thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That's what it cost us to be out there. I write down who I bill. The owner wasn't even there, they weren't even in town, I don't know how it started. There was a burn ban, but how do I bill? And that's, that's the problem, who do I bill? Can't just put the bill on a fence, people will fix it up. That's, that's where the last board did not want to bill closely. So I think a much longer discussion than I want to pull up tonight to anybody, but so you understand the back history, close the other board, we're around, we had this discussion in two thousand when we wrote this. Uh, or two thousand and twelve, when we wrote this. That was the hangup, was they didn't know what, it wasn't the how much, it was the who.
Right, right.
And again, if criminal is easy, civil is not. And the, it is, yes, it is criminal because it is during a burn ban, but that comes back to the DNR, the DNR can then, which is what we do now, because I just called the DNR officer and said, you come out and do what you gotta do. The DNR does what they need to do. Because they make it a criminal offense at that point. But if it's, Mr. Schmidt, if you're reading the ordinance truly, if you take time to read it, it talks about, right in here, it talks specifically about what we go to, it says, any, any response for a hazardous condition?
What is their hazardous?
Right, that's very, very.
Right.
Uh, it talks about responses that include investigation of cause or a hazardous material spill or a toxic, uh, waste spill. Get that all back. Uh, for any partner response to traffic or vehicle accident, including an elevated controls, a fire spill, safety measure, traffic direction assistance, danger persons, ambulance, crews, air expedition, or persons or person from vehicles. We did twelve things last year. So we're gonna bill. Why? Because they didn't, because that's not what we do. We are caps. We're gonna continue. If the board to do that, then we'll do that. But hang after the ride.
Well, yeah, we have to decide which way we want to go on that. And people do pay taxes for the emergency response. I think really what we're looking at, what would make sense to have in place is a incentive for not burning women with burn bans, some sort of penalty specifically for that. But also as a township, we don't, you know, we're, we're getting to that point where some places this, this size start getting police departments and that type of thing. But we don't, we don't have people specifically trolling out there looking for this type of thing, which we would, we would want to not have all that burning during the burn bans and hopefully limit those number of fires. Maybe there could be a penalty put in place to do that and not in other cases.
Happier, too.
There you go.
If there's a burn ban and I make the decision, well, you didn't know, well, you didn't know that Cleveland was forty-five, you were going eighty-five, I don't care what you did or didn't know, you're still liable for that, you're breaking the law. If there's a burn ban and I decide to go up and, and start burning, there needs to be a penalty.
Ignorance is no excuse.
That's what they do.
Yeah, I didn't know.
And it needs to be happy, my opinion.
Is there no fine for burning in this township? Like if you were caught burning leaves or anything like that?
Well, that's what we're saying, so.
There used to be.
Well, that resolution was never put in place.
They rescinded that one.
Did they? Yeah, because my sister got fined for burning.
It was a grassy beef horn, separate from, uh, any, any, and this word is really vague.
Isn't that a state law, you can't burn the leaves?
No, in populations, in populations of over ninety-three hundred, you cannot burn grass or, or garbage or, um, leaves. Um, or if you're within fourteen hundred feet of a sanctioned village, i.e. the Vodger Lakewood Club.
Right.
But the Vodger Lakewood Club rescinded their ordinance to create a special ordinance in two thousand and eleven, twelve. They did an ordinance that mirrors the state ordinance, which then again also says, because it's including ninety-three hundred, they're not, they, they cannot burn grass, leaves, or solid waste. So it, there is that law, but, but again, it comes down to enforcement issue, it comes down to, um, law enforcement because the local ordinance, law enforcement says they will enforce it. You have to have your enforcement person do it, or our enforcement person works three days a week. If I was two days ago and I didn't come out there and try to prove it against, I knew it was burning, I knew I was trying to leave. And then I stand there and people are calling the law.
Yeah.
It, it's what it is. So.
Right.
He smiled, put the fire out, go. So again, I will do whatever you folks tell me to do, and I know that, and citizens out there, nobody know that on that.
Well, the fire department should be paid no matter what, because if, in an accident when the fire department is called, they're paid by somebody, whether it's an insurance company, I mean, and, and if these people.
Not always, sir. We, we, the township is, is, because there was never a law put in, we do not bill for car accidents. We can, but we can't because they never enacted the ordinance to allow me to do that. So for every, and I got my last.
You know, there's that on township.
Correct. But I, I'm, I'm not going to speak ill of any administration I've worked for or functioned for.
No, you brought it up.
But yeah, but though you brought it up, yes. Uh, like I, like I had mentioned, um, uh, in the five-year study, um, of, from Old Orchard to, um, Dawson Road, which is five point four seven miles, we had four hundred and fifty-eight car accidents, included eighteen fatalities in five years. And I can't touch this thing alive because the administration did not feel it was necessary. Again, I'm, I will do what my board tells me to do. That's, that's, they tell me to do it, I'll do it. They tell me not to, I nod my head, pull out and provide the best service we can at the tax rate that you were chosen to be a part of.
Wait, speak up for any of the other surrounding townships or?
Can I?
What about the other surrounding townships in our area?
Do they have ordinance? Yes, they have ordinance, yes. Uh, I don't know about Holton or Blue Lake, Muskegon Township does, White Lake Fire Authority does, and everybody south of there does.
That seems a little bit better than going after, uh, being burned at.
Right, yeah.
Somebody's liable, insurance companies are paying.
Right, right. The insurance companies will, we can, uh, we can. The only thing that the board did allow us to do, uh, which really wasn't their choice, was, was, uh, consumer's power. If we're on the scene or consumer's power lines, their power line was not caught, it was caused by an act of God or nature. We can, if we're there for an hour, more than an hour waiting for them to arrive, we can send a bill. Um, we used to be able to bill for actual, consumers came back and said they're the biggest taxpayer in the state and they said, don't pay anymore, so they cut it down, we can only charge two more dollars for the first hour and it was like eighteen dollars for every hour after that or something. It's more of a pain in the butt for us to try and get the bill back, so we just don't. That was the only thing we were allowed to bill for was consumer's power. Other than that, probably can't bill for car accidents, we can't bill for anything in the ordinance, basically. President, you forget because there's nothing bound. And that's to answer your question to us why we couldn't, because we could have, but we, we can't because the insurance companies say, well, let me see your ordinance, and we go, we don't have one, they say, here's your bill back. Tag, you're it.
You can't do fifty-five and zero rate like they tripled our rate?
Uh, yeah. Again, I nodded my head and you rimmed it. With a smile over your head.
That's why we love you.
You get married for how many years?
Was that ele- eleven, uh, shit?
How many per se bills do you take?
No, dude, we actually got fired on Friday, my blood pressure was ninety over fifty-five.
But so a lot of details we'll have to look at working out there.
Really, I'll, I'll answer your question, call me three pros. Well, that's why we did ask, because that's exactly what we're trying to do now, so. That's exactly what we did, that's why I did it. What I can do to make it happen, I'll, I'll, I'll make your lives easy, to her.
All right, anything else on that? Next, boat ramps. All right, so the boat ramps I've been acquiring about over the last handful of months. Basically for North Lake, Middle Lake, and West Lake, the part out of the water, our maintenance goes out and does some stuff with that, basically to make sure that emergency services can get access there. The one on Twin Lake itself is done by the county. That's the only one that's in the DNR system, but the DNR doesn't.
Touch it. They don't touch it.
They don't, the DNR doesn't do anything with it, it's supposed to be the county. And then as far as in the water, we can find no records, and the DNR has no records of any dredging being done for any of the ramps, that, that type of thing. And this year, we're hitting a weird spot because the water's so low, that's unusual. And I've been getting complaints about boats getting stuck and that type of thing. I inquired with one company in the area about what it would take to dredge, something like that, and they didn't get back to me. But, uh, so, and we, we pulled, we pulled, we pulled.
Here's the thing we need to really think about as a board, um, the way the water is right now. And I just watched the other day at Twin Lake, the gentleman putting his pontoon in the water with his pickup truck, and how he got it off, the tread it was, slam on the gas and then slam on the brakes, and watched the boat slide off the trail. Now, here's the question now, if he had to do that to get it in the water, what's gonna happen during the fall when that water drops another foot? Six, eight, maybe twelve inches, because it's a hot summer, we know these lakes get down pretty low. They, I watched last year on my dock, that water level in the bow was eighteen inches. So it, it, it can drop quite a bit. So here's, here's the issue, if we're responsible for those dock, those ramps, and we got all these boats in that water, and now it's coming into the season, they can't get their boats out because they're not dredged, they can't get their boats out. Who's gonna pay for all that?
There's only a million dollars for the boats, you can tell on the lake shore. I'm not saying that they could sue, but who is responsible for that?
Well, I mean, anyone, sue, you wanna think tough.
Nobody told you to put your boat in the water, and that's your choice.
We have, we have chosen not to this year because the others are.
We, we already have a plan, if it, if it gets that bad, we're gonna pull it up on the beach and leave it sit. A lot of people do. A lot of people just pull them up on their beach.
They're neighbors.
So now this, like you said, county's responsible for, uh, Twin Lake. Well, it shouldn't just end at the edge of the water, because if you, I mean, think about it, we got all this runoff to sand. Every time a rain, if you see, especially a heavy rain, it's running right in that lake. And you're watching that sand coming up in the water. So it's getting shallower every year, it's heading out deeper, it's getting shallower. So somebody should be responsible making sure that these ramps are maintained. I mean, that's part of our responsibility. If not our township, then the county, somebody is.
On an EPA standpoint, if a truck does what he did and doesn't make it out and he gets stuck in the water, all of a sudden, how many gallons of fuel possibly gonna be in our lake?
They build the insurance company.
Forget that, I'm talking about our lake.
Yep.
Forget the money, mom, I'm talking about what's the damage that's going into our lake.
Make a special assessment for the boat launch.
That's what, what are our options? Because we need an option.
And that's why you're used to drought.
I don't agree about that, because like I said, I'm not living on your lake and I'm not able to use your boat, so.
Well, other people.
If I drive my car, I'm totally stuck, who's gonna pay my tow bill? I mean, it's.
Well, what I'm saying is, it's not just that, you've got also people going out fishing, you know, they use our lakes all the time. It's not just the locals that live.
Is there a permit tag they have to have to use that boat once?
The county does charge. Five bucks for the day or twenty dollars for the season, but it's just getting.
Right.
But it's county and it's just to the water.
Right.
So anything beyond the water, the county's not.
Okay, well, here, this is a good example. I know he said that the sand's washing in. Long Lake Channel was dredged two years ago. It's gonna start being dredged beginning of July.
I can't believe it.
Because it's ankle deep. The only thing that can get up there are pipe auto boats and down, uh, and.
Kayaks.
Pits and kayaks and, there is a few pontoons that are getting through there, but they're struggling.
Right. Well, that's because the barrier's never really completed. You're supposed to have some type of barrier.
Well, the barrier actually washed away.
But you're supposed to have some type of retaining water.
Are we at a low water point right now, too? Yeah, maintaining to a low water point, should we have some sort of middle road standard? Because now we're gonna dredge everything ninety miles deep because the water is low, when we do like last year, the water was high.
But you're right about that, I'm talking about from what I was nineteen eighty-four.
Yeah, I remember, I remember in Blue Lake, when I was young, there was, the ramp was very steep and deep there right after the cement dropped off, and someone dropped an entire truck. And the entire truck was completely underwater right at the end of the ramp.
These are, we got, that's what, that's part of discussing, is we gotta find out the happy medium. What can we do? What is the responsibility? Because let's, let's face it, these ramps are not being maintained, and they should be. I'm like, why else would we be having there? It's not just for people that live in here, other people from other places come here and go fishing.
A lot of winters.
I know, I know people where I worked, when I worked for the state, guys I worked for, they would go ice fishing out there all the time. And even during the summer months, they go fishing out there. They live down, one of those, one of those up by Luddington. They come here because they like to, they like the, uh, the Blue Lake perch here, because it's, it used to be really good fishing there. It's on the way home from work.
Well, so the question becomes, so if you want, right? If you wanna dredge it, you can, you can dredge anything that has water, who pays for it?
Right.
And that's what we need to figure out.
Judging won't last.
Right, so who continually pays for it? Who pays for it every year?
So the channel that is dug in between Twin and Middle, that's.
It's a little disaster.
Yep. Yes, and I live right there, so I'm dealing with wave runners that like going thirty mile an hour through there. Um, I have little kids that right now, for them to go out, they're almost, for them to swim is straight in front of it. And, like, literally right in front of it before it gets deep enough where my kids can actually float.
And there's no signs.
There's no signs, and they were doing it last night just for fun, blowing through there back and forth.
Yeah, it's low, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's, and unfortunately, something by renters.
I don't know if there can be something that can put in there, if, you know.
Who was responsible to put a sign there?
The, the township, it was a weird, the, the channels were a very weird deal. Uh, but the, the township is responsible for those, we have the easements for them. We, I mean, the one between Middle Lake and West Lake, um, Middle Lake end definitely needs to be cleaned out. With the water being low, those are in weird shape anyways. And I would like to, to get signs out as well for a no-wake zone.
Actually, they're just washing right back into. And they're waves, they're in the sand, just collapsing.
Here's the other thing, though, if no one ever takes board safety, they don't know that. If you got anything with a hundred feet, you're supposed to go away.
I'm obsessed, we can't lie on anymore.
And I mean, I never see a sheriff out there.
There was one yesterday.
I, I saw that when they were young, they would, they just.
I could be wrong.
That's the other thing, it's how the DNR gotta get out there, you know? Because it is getting really shallow.
Yep.
Fourth of July, it's right around the corner, and that's a crazy date, we all know.
In those channels, the channel maintenance and stuff for now is just, it's just coming right out of the gentleman's line. So I did talk to an engineer on that, and he said normally unless you're a very rich township, uh, which I would follow in that classification, you would have set up a special assessment district around the lakes, but that wasn't done, so it's enough.
The channel was designed to level a lake?
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't designed.
Not as a portal. So it's still functioning in that.
Not considered a waterway.
And now they're gonna put in that fully drainage culvert, which is gonna stop people from going, from going west.
Under the bridge part?
Yeah. West, middle, they might be able to get food there.
Can't get something down anyway. I mean, as long as the water's low, we don't have to worry about it.
That's true.
Now, is, is there any way, like, because I know other places have done this, where they have a, like, time for the lake to be covered? Like, they develop like a no-wake time on the lake from like six-thirty or seven o'clock at night to nine in the morning? So people can come out and join their kayaks, fish, and not have speedboats, because they're so small. So people can come out and join their kayaks, fish, and not have speedboats, because they're so small. Um, and I know a lot of lakes have done this for years, and I just kinda, when I moved up here, I was kinda surprised it doesn't have it, because it is so small.
There are some, there are specific times, and it's, uh, also like a new age for.
Yeah, because I, I know down in, um, Allagin County where I grew up, like, Big Lake just was right on the park from. It's a lot bigger lake, there's like half the amount of people on there, but they put that in effect just so they can get other people to come in and use the lake and be able to fish and enjoy and not have just speedboats all night long until dark.
Right, sure. Yeah, I agree, though. Leave out like their peace and quiet.
Yeah, because they can get the pontoons coming out and stuff, and it's nice and quiet and peaceful, just everybody cruising. And then of course you get a bunch of wave runners that come out there and it's just.
And they ruin the money.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't understand if it's a county's part, and the county's taking its money, why isn't the county maintaining? Then, if they're charging, why aren't they maintaining? Where's the money from?
Well, usually there's no problem spending money. Right. It's difficult, too, I mean, you have two different levels, you got, you have the county board. Yeah, well, basically, find us. All right, next item is fish stocking. I've had fish stocking come up a few times, I inquired into it with the DNR, and basically you, you can do it. Uh, initially, in one of my email exchanges with the DNR, they didn't seem to have records of it having been done with these lakes, but I talked to a fishery, and it says they've been doing it every year in Middle Lake, and they've done it every now and then on North Lake and West Lake in the past. And essentially, there's no fee for the permit from the DNR, you just have to pay the fishery to get the fish and put it in. There's one on River Road that's certified by the DNR to do it. And, I mean, it's reasonable for people to stock fish if they want, but you end up with the same thing in, in the lake situation, where you have people that don't own the lakes, don't do anything on the lakes. I don't think it makes sense to tax everyone in the township to put fish in the lakes that some people have been using. Thoughts?
Very hard to judge.
We just figured, Twin Lake with the channels being open, we're just stealing West Lake and Middle Lake's fish.
What's your fish story?
I will say I have caught the two biggest bass out of Twin since that channel was done over.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, everything trans, if the channel's three lakes.
I have caught one.
We have no problem, we don't need years until last year.
Yeah, so when that was put in in 1984, those three lakes were connected. North Lake was left separate because its water quality wasn't as high at that time. And then the Lake Lavalle device was put on in Twin Lake that leads into the right drain, that was all set up. And it wasn't maintained, so the channels ended up filling in, and there was a fight about it over the last few years. Any other fish stocking? Questions, ideas? All right, next, we have pandemic resolution. So I wrote an entire page on this, obviously it gets into political theory, uh, where the origin of power is. If you read various documents like Michigan State University, they clearly state that part of the local government or local legislator comes from the state. There's some interesting theory in that direction, that they follow the United States, and everything flows from the states. But then you have in the Constitution, right, after the Articles of Confederation, the founding fathers ended up consolidating the power of the Constitution. It was very controversial at the time, and you have the supremacy clause, that where everything issued and flows from the highest level. Some of that problem was worked out in the 1860s with the states losing. Uh, and, I mean, to a large extent, we have a federal theory of government, but in Michigan right now, we have a unitary operating government, and that explodes from, from the top, from, from the governor essentially down to us. So this resolution is specifically for Calcasas County, and they're just saying that there has been some injustices and an imbalance of power. There's various ways to correct this, you can recognize a power higher than the state, you can recognize powers in the states that are co-equal with the governor. You, a, a smaller government could recognize themselves as having the power directly derived from the consent of the people. And I include the documents from American history, but really, this is a political history starting in like 1100, leading to 1689 with the English Bill of Rights, and then you get into American history. And there's some, there's some interesting things in here. You can see the theory operating in the Constitution, Declaration, uh, or the Constitution, Declaration of Independence, the Michigan Constitution, where they say we, the people, obviously is the federal theory of government. So questions, thoughts, ideas, concerns? Anything? None, okay, interesting, all right. Well, next we have vaccine passports. Now, they're one of the major political issues, political issues of our time, I would say, a hot button, yes. Uh, so the county passed a resolution against vaccine passports, and I've included that in here. You get into the same thing, and you do technically with everything at the township level, uh, the origin of power and what power we have, where it comes from. And it's reasonable on whether or not we should consider something like this.
I say we follow the county. Uh, passports are just another way of isolationism. The Nazis did it during the Nazi era, you know, identifying the Jews from the star of their purses. They, they determined who the people were at all, they had no determination, so the minority ruled the majority. And this is just another way of identifying and dividing the people. This is something we don't need, we don't need, we don't need division, we need to be, we're all the same. We are all American citizens, we shouldn't have to have passports for shopping or using our services within our own community. Um, passports are a definite no-no. We do not want that here in this township.
Good, any other questions, comments?
So do we get a pass letter of motion? Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna, I mean, this resolution was brought up because there were some people in Meskegon County that thought that passports would be a good idea. I don't see anybody in here that wants this, so I think we, we don't really need to even have to do anything with it. We know we don't want passports.
As long as the state's not forcing on it.
No, that, well, we don't have, we, then we'll have to deal, give what we can. I don't see.
Right, I just wanna make it on the record, where I stand.
Oh, absolutely, I forget that.
I, well, never mind, I'm, I'm a straight forward, I'm first generation born American, my parents are from a socialist country, okay? They ran from it, and had it shoved on our frontier in America, you know? I'm not gonna, I still got family over there, I'm gonna tell you right now, they're writing it.
There's, there's some of us that can't get the vaccines, there's health issues.
Right, and I shouldn't force it on anybody, I.
It's not even technically a vaccine.
That's not even, yeah, well, that's another, that's another thing we're gonna talk about. Here, you know, what I'm saying is passports are.
You've done enough research, don't need to be a doctor.
Exactly.
Not gonna happen.
None of that. None, so, we're kind of in the middle, aren't we, looking at passing something?
It sounds like, to me, like. Do we need to?
We're lying ourselves with the county, I mean, we're, all of it, they've already passed the resolution.
It'd be short to align with it. It just would.
Yep.
No, it's okay, that's a resolution, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we need to, I don't think that, I mean, it wasn't a, it was a situation where, you know, the board was, there were people on the board that were adamant about having passports, I don't see that on this board, but we can.
Well, we're not always gonna be here forever, I mean, three years or about.
The thing is, yeah, the thing is, in three years, whoever comes in could change it, but, well, for now, we could do that. I mean, I'm just saying, at this point, I don't see that we need anything like that, because there's nobody on this board that even.
You're right, you're right.
Yeah, why waste the paper?
Exactly, yeah. We. Actually, more stream.
I go through a lot of trends.
I agree.
Specifically, I. I do, I, I mean, you know, if, if there was a, a situation where there were some people that were saying, you know, we need to have passports, then I would say, hey, we need a resolution. But right now, I, at this point, you know, I'm listening to this board, I don't see anybody here that wants to even consider something.
I think that's a, I think it's a very reasonable perspective. I, I would like to see us do one anyway. I would like to, I would like to see it on the record.
We can't do it, we have to go into the next meeting.
We have nothing drawn up yet, but I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Make it up.
Next one is library Wi-Fi, this is really an FYI. Obviously, internet access in the area is something we're looking at, and I am following up with that, with, I have one other company interested. But this, and I reached out to a lot, but this is interesting, that the, the library system identified on their own that we could definitely use more internet access. And so what they're doing at no charge to the township is attaching to the outside of the library so that they can have, they can put Wi-Fi into the parking lot, so you can pull up there at any time, access the Wi-Fi from the parking lot, which is very useful. I already told them to go ahead and do it, but I wanted to include it as an FYI. Questions, thoughts, ideas, comments, concerns?
Awesome, can you include, is that included on the county website if somebody here wanted to see more information like that? Is that something that they can access on?
It is, it is not currently, uh, we could, we could probably sell something like that. And I think it'd make more sense once they get it up, but you don't know exactly.
Yeah, we don't know for sure.
But sometimes, that's something.
Because that's a kudos to the library.
Yeah.
I think that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they reached out to me, uh, yes.
Don't forget our hot spots. Can anybody's library card, card, check one out, Verizon hotspots? You can use up to six devices, Richard knows, he takes them all the time for his grandkids. And, uh, you just check it out, the library card doesn't cost you anything, you have to be 18-year-old or have a library card. Check it out for three weeks free. Travel with it, comes with a charging case and everything.
Awesome, that is awesome.
And, get another one, I have families that bring one in, pick another one up, bring one in and pick another one up.
Especially with the schoolers or people that are helping.
Anyway.
Hope everybody knows where the library is.
I, I, I have eight of them at our ranch, but there's, um, about 150 in Meskegon County, so if we don't have one, you can request us to get one in for you, or you can just go to, say, the Heights, you say, well, they got one on the shelf at the Heights, and you just drive over there and get there.
The Heights are always there.
You're welcome. Yeah, Ravanna and the Heights both have, um, a grant that paid for a bundle of them. So they usually always have them.
All right, yeah, we appreciate it, guys. Next, we have purchasing policy. So basically, the reason it came up is because it really doesn't work, it almost doesn't apply in the case of oil. Because their amounts are so great that even maintenance, repairs, they're not gonna wait to re, repairs of the trucks. You know, that's, that's pretty obvious, it has to be done, and they add up very quickly. And then some of these other things fall into, they kind of fall into that same category where it becomes odd. And I looked at this right when we got in office, and it seemed like, ah, it'll just be simple, I'll just adjust that, no problem. And then it's one of those things that gets a little more complex, and so I still haven't brought anything forward with it, uh, because I haven't written it. So it seems to me like there could be the potential for exemptions for repairs to equipment we already have, something like that. Or there could be an exemption for items that are budgeted for at the beginning of the year, so that even if they're large, we're approving them at that time, so they don't have to be approved later, something like that. Questions, thoughts, ideas?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea, because it, like you said, we don't, we can't always foresee what's coming with trucks, which like this, we can't, you know, I lost.
No pressure.
I should have let them call the guys.
To you.
Uh, yeah, to you. Um, I'm just saying, we're gonna do it. So, okay, I came back, the policy was that $250 for any department head. Up to $1,000 to the township supervisor. Emergency purchase had to be up to $3,000 before it had to go to a township board general vote. Uh, yeah, the volume, I remember, I had the tanker brakes, uh, it was a day after the board missed it. I had to wait 30 days to have an emergency fix.
What?
It was a $70,000 bill or something.
No, that's not right.
So I leaned back that any, I, yeah, I purchased 250, and they finally lifted that, and I was able to, to create accounts and get credit cards and get all the things. But I can only, uh, for employee health and wellness, I turn up here, uh, fuel wasn't an issue, and maintenance to the vehicles. Problem is, they didn't include anything with building, they didn't include anything with even offset my department, the other departments. And so there was this sticky wicket of, does it go, does it not go? It had come up originally that anything that was, again, like I do when I, my board pattern, my budget packet every year, this is what we're looking at, big ticket items. The philosophy was supposed to be back, and again, not speaking ill of prior administrations. They didn't, suggestion was, if I have $30,000 in vehicle maintenance, when I had $30,000 and one penny, you can come after me. Until that point, leave me alone. That's why we have a budget, that's why the electors pass the budget. Which means you don't spend past the budget. If you're a, so. What was the word you used, John? Fiscally responsible individual, myself. Myser.
Myser.
I'm not, I'm not going to get to that number. I'm not going to, that's, that's not my plan, that's not my budget, and that's what a budget is. The board didn't wanna go that route, they wanted it to still be a number, because they needed to make sure that. Karen, do you remember the exact word? Mrs. Fowler, do you remember the exact numbers that board used? It were, it was along the lines of, we need to have a phone, tell you what to do. Basically, which, again, if I'm gonna do, I'll do it. I work for you folks, actually, I work for them, but. I gotta talk to you guys. The philosophy then was pushed forward that again, I could do, build out vehicle maintenance and, um, any purchase of the, any repair of a vehicle, couldn't get anything additional, like broken axe, oh, well, you can. That was a repair to the vehicle, that was a piece of equipment. It didn't include equipment or, or, um, uh, supplies and that kind of stuff. If, if, Fowler, so if ever pandemic happened, I got it, it was all the pandemic stuff. The history was that we didn't, that there needed to be, and Jeff and I had this conversation, and so I told, had that first conversation. It was an easy order, so I'm like, oh, no, this is a, this is a orange, that's gonna open out. And, and I don't know where, I don't understand why, I, 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 in my simpleton head, you gave me X amount of money this year, if I don't spend that X amount of money, then it's not an issue. I, if I go over, okay, but I don't understand why, why we have to. Again, I have no problem, and, oh, back then, too, I had to send emails to everybody, going, well, no, I'm doing it, and then they have said, yes, you're the executive. You're the three, elected, you're the three, four, five, six. So to add to that, just one didn't agree to it, but then that became the emergency purchase, and I had to ask, what they call the executive committee, the three, treasurer, president, supervisor, I had to ask them, and they, two out of the three said yes, then I could make the purchase. And so I'm still staying with today, that I have to, have to come to you folks' house.
So give the authority to charge people for accidents and put it in a general fund for the fire department?
Oh, that's two completely different issues.
I'll go back to some of them. I, uh, and, I, I don't care what you come up with, but I think it needs to be across the board, I don't necessarily believe in my opinion that it could be just a fire department. I think we need to look at maintenance, we need to look at.
I, I agree.
I think that there's too many, there's too many variables and things that happen, when one wall breaks down, do we wanna wait 30 days for them to be able to run, move along? Uh, I mean, I did, yes, I think everything in my life is emergency for the most part. So I live that route, and I don't care, I can't be any, you're part of that, when the fire truck mess happened, that it was. I'd say that just sell the fire trucks, and then not even get fixed for 30 days, open your house with a fire now, because I can't bring a fire truck. I got in trouble for that. But my point is that I think that we, we need to look at it as a township-wide, not, not specifically towards, not that I don't mind the pit now, it's, I don't think it needs to be specific, I think it's just, whatever you come up with, but I think, uh, uh, in my book, $5,000, you sell it to squad cost, and seven grain, and superseded that, so I gotta wait 30 more days, and, and again, I pray, I mean, citizens need that truck that I didn't take out, because I had to wait for the board of your seven to say, yes, anyways. And so I don't, I don't understand why, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is. I lie with the answer, but in my opinion, if you want my honest, my honest opinion, if you gave me a budget, if the budget says $30,000 in vehicle maintenance, don't spend more than $30,000, except, that's how I look, but, you're not gonna be here forever, and I'm not either. Those you thought I'm leaving, I'm not.
No, I agree, because the purchasing policy needs to be looked at across the board, not just the fire department. The whole, the whole system needs to be looked at, because it was bad, and it, and it got a quick fix that wasn't much better, and we're still at a point where, yeah, it's okay, but it's not where it should be, and I agree. Um, is it, you know, is a department head, if you have a budget, if you're, if the elect, the electors give you a budget, that's where you're, that's where you're working at, that's your job.
Right, if you look at, if you look at the current, since now the current, uh, ordinance or the current purchasing policy by our employee handbook, uh, anything over 1,000 or 3,000. or the current purchasing policy by our playbook, anything over 1,000 or 3,000, 1,000 and 3,000 have to bring to the board, anything over 3,000, well, you're sealed bids. The fire truck, I have one repair guy.
Right, and sealed bids.
I see fields, I said be sealed bid, now I have to sit and wait until the board to have you approved.
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, we need to really look at...
And it's not even, it's not operating right now, because it can't, because we're not, we're not gonna let fire trucks be down, so, so it's not even working now, it's just...
I think there's something the board needs to look at, and I, and I think not in six months. I think it needs to be something that needs to be addressed immediately, because it is a situation where, when this was first brought up, these numbers might have been...
This was, this was the transition...
Between the blue team and the...
Yes.
Yeah, and then it could have been, it could have been, it could have been correct, I mean, it could have worked, but now, you know, looking at, like you're saying, a fire truck costs $7,000 if it breaks down, well, these numbers don't even...
I'm going to touch it.
No, so we need to take a look at the whole policy as a whole and...
I mean, if we had to make it specific, I'm cool with that, I just don't know if that's gonna create my work again, I agree with that, we will.
Well, we need to, you can take what you have and, and adjust it and make it work for what you need, you don't, we don't need to totally throw everything in a garbage, but I think these numbers and the policies are, they're integrated.
Yeah.
And we need to look at that, and we need to fix it. So I think, and it isn't something, well, we could, I know you like to do the, this isn't something that should come up again as a discussion item.
No.
The next time it comes up, it should be something we own on.
Yep, I agree.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree.
I looked at it.
Don't worry about that, I got a file.
Yeah, I'm throwing you under the gun, chief.
No, it wasn't.
I've changed that a hundred times, you have come into my office and you've said, hey, I've got a Roman truck, and I've looked at you, so what the hell are you doing in my office? What's Roman truck doing? What's a truck? What are you gonna do with it? Pickstand thing. You don't need my answer, pickstand thing.
Well, yeah, and I mean, that is basically, because when I stumbled into it, I don't think this structure works, so tweaking of this policy doesn't work, that's what's been tried in the past.
Tweaking doesn't work.
There's a different perspective that needs to be taken, and I ended up putting it off because I didn't write it. So, but yeah, I mean, if your proposal, that Allen writes it up, I think that's fine, I'm writing it off. I'm writing it off, so someone else writes it, somebody that's buying with me.
Now you're the Nazi.
You're the Nazi, chief.
Come on over to my office, let's talk.
I'm on fire.
Yeah. What's your Keeler look like?
All right, anything else on that?
Let's do it.
All right, cares act, so this is the money coming from the feds, we, if you believe, the money for the township goes to the state first before it comes to the township. So what I've included in here is actually information on how it's limited in dates for counties, because we have more information out about counties right now, but I think we can assume that the dates and restrictions will be the same, and so it's something that we just want to start looking at what we potentially want to use it for. Now, if we're looking at $923,000 or bucks, we, because the dates are a few years out, we don't need to be spending the money now, some of these counties are, I think that is really going to hurt them, because if they spend it, and then we found out when they get the money that you couldn't spend it on that thing, that there's gonna be some sort of fight on them trying to pay money back.
So Meskegon County, Meskegon Township, if you spend their money, and then they'll send them ours, is what you're saying?
I do not believe so. At that, the money they sent specifically for the roads was a special deal, because it never made it to us, again, it stopped at an organization right before it would have gotten to us, and so this money will come to us. But if we look at, like, utilities is, is who we spend on, and the thing is, $923,000 doesn't go very far on utilities, it doesn't pave one mile of road. I talked to Comcast about broadcast, and he said it's not even worth him coming up with a plan, it's too little money to make a difference, which is, which is kind of wild, wild to hear. And so it is a decent, decent amount of money, so we want to have some ideas in place for what it can be used for. We're gonna keep getting information on rules, I think we'll probably have the details of the rules at the same time when we get the money. I think it's how that is going to work. It'd be great, because the sewer funds, the debt, the bond, is going to run out, I think it's 10 months from now, so, which is part of why we're doing the sewer rate study, it'd be great to pay some of that debt down so that the fund doesn't run out, because the fund can't go upside down. I don't know if it can be applied to that or not, so things, things to think about, things to look into. Questions, thoughts, ideas?
No, we'll have three hours, and some of us have jobs tomorrow, so I'm here. I know you have to do it, you just go to the cop, and then I can just go over there.
You'll get your bed ready for me.
I'm just, I, I, I think this is a wonderful thing, but I don't eat, I, and I've gone out and I've looked at this, and, because you know I'm proactive about it, but I'm the kind of, if it's, if it's not in our hand, I don't even want to begin to think about spending it.
Of course.
Because it's kind of like, here's the money, but, oh, wait, we've changed our mind. So I'm, I'm very skeptical about it, but I am doing some research, and Jeffrey and I work together, and we're going to different places, and I've gone to that portal, and it doesn't tell me that we can, we can actually try to get the money yet, so, because it's all, it is all set up for counties, and hopefully we'll see something coming our way, but I get lots of emails from people wanting to help me spend it.
I've had people contact me and have recommended, recommendations added together would be tens of millions of dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, and yeah, I've had lots of people saying, here, I'll help you spend your, that money. I'm like, no.
We don't need her.
No, thank you. So, wow.
Next, the fireworks display, I know the leadership of that organization changed a couple of times this year, and it got weird, because we needed paperwork and that type of thing, but we did get paperwork, and Lori has already approved this, so this is good to go, and everything's moving forward with that. I heard the person that used to run it, is back in charge again, and... You're gonna have to get, you're gonna have to do like some sort of internship for replacing yourself.
Yeah, unless someone else wants it.
No.
It wasn't going well, so I had to make it all get under control.
Can I retire? Glad you stepped up.
All right, back in, yeah. We appreciate it.
It's the first time I've heard that.
And next, we have, and the last thing, the ordinance enforcement process resolution, there's a pretty big thing, so I won't talk about it very long, but I've written this up, and essentially, there's substantive versus procedural ordinances or laws, and the substantive ones are the ones we talk about a lot of times, very specific things. This one's a procedural one, of how something goes about, and how something happens, which, which I think are very important. And in this, it is recommended by state-level organizations that we don't have something specific so that we're more flexible, and then we can't have an issue with not following our own due process. I disagree with that, I think there should be a due process in place that everyone can objectively see, and essentially, I've written out a proposal for it here, we've talked a lot a few times in working sessions, and today, and to have multiple stages where hopefully there can be a check and balance to the application of that power.
Okay.
Questions, thoughts, ideas?
I like this idea of what I wrote.
It's, it's good that we actually have a check and balance, that we actually have a process in place, so just if you're...
A consistent process, yeah.
Exactly.
All right, well, we have our last public comment, if anyone would like to come up and comment on anything, if you contain your name, address, three minutes, okay? Does anyone want to do public comment?
Yeah, I do get it.
Yeah.
Sorry, I gotta worry about it myself, but...
From the end.
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back up to the issue of even Michalina. Okay, between all the horse trailers that are up and down, if you got prime, delivering it every day, all the other truckers that are up and down the road, it's not ditched, it's not even a gravel road, I've talked to the road commission over and over about this, they have never made that a gravel road. They'll go through once in a while, and it will spread gravel over spots that get bad. So even if it doesn't get paved, if it gets whitened, it gets ditched, and it gets actually turned into a gravel road, wouldn't really help, because I think for one, it's gonna slow the kids down that like fishtail on the road, because they're gonna end up in the ditch. Now they end up in somebody's yard, and then they just keep going.
Plus the dust will be down.
It'll knock the dust down, because they put a lot of clay in it instead of just dirt, because I can be in my backyard, I live 150 feet off the road, and I could be in my backyard here at Hargelby with a south wind, three minutes later, there goes the bomb, right over the road. So the other guy that spoke here about not wanting it, he lives a quarter mile off, I don't know. He doesn't know, he doesn't already know, he told me that if they paved it, it's gonna be a drag strip. It already is a drag strip, it's a dirt drag strip, that's all it is right now.
We just need to have your police presence on that road.
And where Wanda lives, she has, this spring, and last year, when we had all that rain, there was a lot of times when the road was four to five feet wide, because it was all water on both sides.
We got rain?
With a little bit we had, we had a little, so, and if you ditching it and turning it actually into a gravel road would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
One tide, 942 West Michalina, I think I'm the oldest president.
I think I was after you, yeah.
On the road, yeah, you keep waiting. 31 years I've been here. Every time we have a house built or somebody moves in, they're the problem, they're the ones that, they come from the city to the country and they act like a bunch of idiots. And the quads, the quads aren't from people who are trailing their quads on the road and then driving up and down, it's from the residents. And I can't identify every car on that road, but I can tell you a lot of them cars that go up and down that road 9 miles an hour, live on that road, they're not just passing through. So, and I was opposed to the horse trailer, the equestrian trail, when they, when Nancy brought it up, because I knew there'd be more traffic, I mean, I didn't realize it, but I was more against the, have it go through the back of my property, and they pop out everywhere because they get lost, because they don't have any markers, they're always cutting across the yards because they get back in there, and it's between, and it's me, township, and then the state, the expressway ones right behind my house. But it's not, it would be nice if the road was in better shape. I'm like, I'm like, right, I see the, I see the, I could stand on the kitchen window when somebody goes by, the whole thing just built up was, I can taste it, laying on my couch watching TV, I thought my windows closed. But it's, something needs to be done to keep it in better shape.
Yeah, it's the ruts, too.
Yeah.
It doesn't get graded very often.
The washboards, everybody don't so fast.
But they don't have, the county does the best they can, but as soon as they grade it, something comes through there, fishtails all over the place, you know? I got a $30,000 car sitting out there, looks like crap, because they make ruts in the road, and then I drive through them, and then everything is, it breaks down. When COVID hit, we didn't have any school buses, that road was great. That road was great, no, nobody's covered school buses going by 8:30, 9:30, 10:30, 3:30, 4:30, because I've been right about that water puddle, I got a puddle up there, I had to go up there with a shovel, and I'm, I'm not sure paving it is gonna, is gonna make it better or worse. I signed the petition, and I'll pay, I'll pay whatever everybody wants to do, but it's a quarter mile drag strip, it's a mile and a quarter from Whitehall Road, it's a mile from Whitehall Road to my house, and when they, when they go by my house, they've only got a quarter mile to make that turn before they get to their rest area, and they're going much crazy.
All right. Thank you.
I'll switch things off from here, because you're over three hours, and thank, I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Good, any other comment, public, forward, yes?
Just, I'm Rachel Church, your librarian, living on Holler Road, and I brought the newsletters for summer reading program, just want to remind you, your textiles are at, I read it, they're what you're being used, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Are you gonna leave me some of those?
Yeah.
Yay!
Of course, and we're having a book sale, so I'll see that.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I second that.
Motion to second all things, yeah?